We do have one business before the council goes into deliberation on the budget. We do need to call a special council meeting to order, so Jackie, could you call the roll, please?
Here.
Here.
Patty?
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Thank you, everyone. The first thing on the agenda, and of course, remember, on a special council meeting, nothing can be added to the agenda. I believe we just have a couple of different things. The first is the -- Jason, help me out. We want to reconsider the bid. What's the appropriate motion?
I don't think reconsideration is appropriate. I think you want to clarify the award.
Okay, very good. Let's go to -- and if you hadn't got the notes yet, there was a mistake made at last, Monday's night's council meeting. We did not award the appropriate bid on the lawnmower. We awarded it to RDO after we went through that whole exercise. I'm going to let Jerry Cole explain that. There should be a memo with the Parks and Recs logo on the top left-hand corner. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to apologize to the mayor and city council tonight for what we have to go through to complete this. The recommendation from the Parks and Recreation is to award to the Midwest Turf and Irrigation at $46,910. The low bid of $44,005.3 from Midwest Turf did not meet specifications because it was a demo and last year's model, and we bid out a new this year's model. The second, the RDO equipment, did not meet specifications because of the deck mowing width, the reversible cooling fan didn't have one, and the bi-directional wing protection units, it didn't come with that either. So because of that, the low bid that meets is the Midwest Turf and Irrigation, $46,910.
The chair looked for a motion to -- thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Midwest Turf and Irrigation for the amount of $46,910. Jason, let's go to Jason.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, this is the award to the lowest responsible bidder, meeting specifications, and that's the reason this item is back tonight for Monday.
Okay, very good. Everyone, we did have a second, correct? Thank you. And just for the council's information, the Parks Department did contact RDO and explain what happened here, so this is not coming as a surprise to them. Very good. Any discussion on that motion? I don't see any lights. I was kidding.
Yes. That's good.
Halls in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. And with that, my roll is done, and I'll turn the meeting over to the council president, Deb Hadcock.
Council, if it's okay with you, we're going to start with the council budget work session. We're going to start with the CPI discussion. That was some of the suggestion off some of the council members, and I appreciate suggestions from people. If we could stick to the CPI discussion first, and then move on to the mayor's budget, and then the unfunded, which would be the priority list, that would hopefully be our direction tonight. But if anybody has questions on the CPI, this is the time to ask. Pauline is here. There is a paper that explains CPI, but if we need a little bit more discussion or definition, we do have a ESOL up front, if anybody needs her to -- Ms. Pauline, to explain a little more, or have any discussion about how we do the CPI. Councilman O'Krepeke.
Thank you very much. Just out of curiosity, this CPI that we're considering right now, what does that mean for a typical homeowner? What is that? If we take the CPI, what's that going to increase, the typical homeowner?
Go ahead, Pauline.
Thank you, ma'am chair. On the memo, on the second page of that email, I did a calculation on a home that is valued at $150,000, and that would be the equalized value with a 100--
Wait, wait, wait. You're saying--
On the second--
There's a lot of second pages.
Second page of this. That one's -- it's going to be, I printed it off, it'll be an email from Jim Preston to Deb, the council group, Mayor Hanks, and myself. And on the backside, there is a stapled sheet where it has a projection for the 2009 budget with CPI and without CPI. On a $150,000 home, the annual effect would be $12.86, which would be approximately 107 per month.
How much? $10. $10 seven.
Correct. Ms. O'Krepeke, sorry.
Thank you. So what does that mean for businesses?
Depending on what their business is worth, for every $150,000 of equalized value, it will be another $12.86 per year. So if your business building is valued at 300,000, it'd be about $25.60 a year.
So there's no difference between residential and commercial buildings for property taxes?
There is a difference between owner-occupied and non-owner-occupied, and obviously, a business would be a non-owner-occupied. Before Jim went on vacation, we sat down and looked at what the percent of the overall mill levy, what the city's portion is versus everyone else's. The city has about 17.3% of the total mill belongs to the city. When I looked at this, I did not take that into consideration at all. I looked at what the tax bill would be for the home based, and it was an owner-occupied home. The total mill on an owner-occupied home is about $17, and on a non-owner-occupied status, it's about $22. So it just, I would have to sit down and recalculate it, but it's still, the average is about 17.3% of the total mill levy.
Thank you, Bill.
Not to be too argumentative, but I thought there was a significant difference in percentage, like 3% or 4% between commercial and residential. As we talked about these kinds of things in the past, I remember that, you know, we talked about TIPS, and 67% goes to school districts, 22% goes to the county, and somehow it gets worked out, the remainder goes to us, or something like that. So I was just kind of curious.
If you'd like, I do have some information down in my office with what the mill levy is broken up on a non-owner-occupied home as well.
Mr. O'Krepeke, would you want that information at this time?
No, that's fine.
Thank you. Mayor Hanks, please.
Thank you. I think I might be able to -- typically, there's a difference between the actual mill levy and how the property tax dollars split up. You're exactly right. The schools get about 2/3, county gets a little over 20, 21, 22, 23% based on the year. The city will get anywhere from about 11% to 13%, and there's usually typically 1% somewhere floating for special assessments and so forth. On a typical owner-occupied home, and there again, keep in mind, this is a generalized statement because it floats based upon mill levy and also the property tax base throughout the, not only throughout Rapid City, but throughout the county. On a typical home, you're going to pay somewhere between $18 and $19 per thousand. In other words, you have a $100,000 home, your property tax bill should be roughly about $2,000. Now, there again, that's very rough, and I mean, that's very rough. On a commercial property, it would be close to $3,000 per $100,000. That's typically what I've always used, is if you have a residential home that's owner-occupied, whatever your value is, if it's $100,000, you're going to pay $2,000. If it's commercial, you'll pay $3,000.
Thank you, ma'am.
I hope that helps.
Thank you, Mayor. So this increase, is it still a dollar?
Yes.
A month?
Less than a dollar a month, if I'm not mistaken. Would you figure it was on a -- did you do it on a $150,000 or $100,000 home?
$150.
$150. My understanding, for every $100,000 worth of value on your home, it's about 80 cents or 82 cents?
Probably less than that.
A little less than that. So if you break it down easier, think of $100,000 worth of value, that what you're going to pay is about $9.60 a year more, if you take the CPI on a $100,000 home. So about 80 cents a month. Now, there again, this is where it gets difficult. It all depends on whether or not the tax base grows and the mill levy goes down. So in theory, and there again, we have no idea what it's going to look like in 2009, but in theory, even though we may take the CPI, the dollar amount, the amount of taxes that are basically directed to the city per $100,000 may actually go down if we have enough growth within the base and driving the mill levy down. And so it, what the dollar amounts that you're getting is, if all things remain constant on a $100,000 house, the base doesn't expand and the assessed value doesn't go up, basically what you're talking about is about $80 or 80 cents per month if you take the CPI for a $100,000 home. If you have a $200,000 home, maybe a $1.60 per month. I think that's where you're going with it. Pauline?
Mr. O'Krepeke, you have a follow-up.
So you can't, so you just can't take this $2,000 and tack on another 3% and see what you got?
Well, no. Nope. Keep, there again, keep, keep it, and yes, it is. And the reason is, is there again, keep in mind, is we don't automatically add 3% to the property tax bill. It's a floating number based upon what the assessed value is versus what the mill levy is in the base. And so I will tell you that if you go back and historically look, the mill levy has been going down every single year in Rapid City because our base is growing. And now, some people are going to say, well, my property taxes have gone up. Well, keep in mind, Rapid City is roughly only about 12% of that property tax bill, and the other thing is, it all also depends on the assessment of properties. As they get more accurate as far as doing assessments, or basically establishing the value of homes through the equalization process, there are going to be some people that in the past may have been under-assessed, and yes, they might take a hit. Now, on the other hand, there's a lot of folks, including myself, quite honestly, my property taxes have stayed very constant the last four or five years, and if you adjust it for inflation, I'm, my property taxes have gone up less than the rate of inflation. And I think that's probably fairly true of everyone across the community. Some people are going to stand up and tell you, my property, you know, my property taxes went up 10% this year. Well, typically, that's a function of the assessed value of the property being brought up to market. That isn't the dollar amount or the mill levy that's being charged.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks. Do you have a follow-up bill, or, okay, just one question. Does the county have a CPI?
The county would use the 2.9% CPI, just as all municipalities within the state. That is the number that came from the State Department of Revenue that was spread.
Same schools.
Do you know what their amount was?
It's the same, 2.9%. The CPI is throughout the state.
But do they, based on this, don't they get 23%? So they get, they're actually, total is more than 337?
Correct.
And do they use that every year, or you don't know at this point?
I'm not sure at this point. I've never asked.
Thank you. I've never known the amount if they take the CPI.
Okay, thank you. Questions on CPI, council? Karen Olson, please.
I think it'd be helpful to just go through this example of not, what happens if you don't take the CPI?
Okay.
And we, and Pauline probably is the best person to explain this.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Karen. Ms. Pauline?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I handed out a sheet for you tonight. At the top, it says, "Example of not taking CPI for the city's annual budget." This is a spreadsheet that Colleen started last year. I, well, she probably started before that, but I saw it last year, just to show you the cumulative effect of what would happen if you did not take the CPI.
Pauline, just, can you show us what page one more time?
It's a one sheet that says, "Example of not taking CPI for the city's annual budget." I have a couple extras if you can't find it.
Yes, I have it, thank you. Okay. Everybody else have that paper? Council? There you go. Okay, thank you.
I started with the base that Colleen had set out, that the tax is actually levied in '04 and '05 of $9.8 million. As you know, by various discussions, we are allowed to take the base plus growth plus CPI up to 3%. So the first section shows what the total tax levy would be for 2005. With the CPI, it would be $10.5 million, without would be $10.2. Whatever you decide to do as far as the total levy, that becomes your base for the following year. And then again, you can add the growth and the CPI on that. And so I did that for four years. So in four years, if you were to take the CPI, total tax revenues would be about $45.8 million. If you do not take that CPI for four consecutive years, the cumulative effect would be $42.7 million. Of that, 1.2 is strictly just the CPI amount each year, and another 1.8 million is the cumulative effect of not being able to take additional CPI on top of that and additional growth. So over the course of a four-year period, the city of Rapid City would lose over $3 million in general fund revenues to be able to fund services that we provide. That's a four-year period.
Malcolm Chapman, did you have a question? Okay. Ron Wykamuck? Sorry, Ron.
Pauline, is this example if we don't take it one year, or is it if we don't take it four years consecutively?
This is if you take it four years consecutively.
If we don't take it four years consecutively?
Mm-hmm.
But today, we're talking about one year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I had a question, but it went right out of my mind. Ms. Karen, please.
In thinking about this discussion, I've always supported taking the CPI because what you're doing really is talking about the city's ability to provide goods and services, or purchase goods and services. And what you're looking at is, is the inflation rate. So that the 2.9 is just really bringing up your buying power because of the loss that inflation creates. And so you continue to need that, the city needs that buying power as they, in order to provide the same set of services and goods. And in any budget for a governing body, the most significant cost is salaries, and that's talking about the people who work. And today, a few days ago, at one of the discussions with the school district, there was the suggestion that they could instantly balance their budget if they fired 100 people. But we know that, as in schools, the real key thing that makes government run are the folks who work for government. And so the point would be, as we move forward, it's important to, that we be able to buy the same amount of goods and services in behalf of the citizens of Rapid City, because I rarely hear, not rarely, I'm not sure I've ever asked someone to, for less services. People never ask for less services. They always are interested in some increase. And so if we want to even stay even, the CPI, which represents the loss in buying power, needs, and since it is available, I think that's an important thing that we do for people. It also is important for our employees as we move forward. Over a period of time, the loss could begin to affect a whole range of services and, that we provide, and that are expected to be provided by our citizens. So from my point of view, the decision to support this makes sense, because we are saying to our employees, we want you to have the same buying power, and that is why we are making sure that salaries keep up with the Consumer Price Index, so that the dollars that they're earning this year are going to be able to buy them the same in goods and services next year. I think it's especially important when we look at the potential for increases in basic costs of services this year, which would be costs of fuel across the board. So it makes sense to me that we would take advantage of this provision of the law to be able to take that cost of living increase, that really, all it's doing is making sure the buying power of the dollars of today, of tomorrow, are the same as the buying power of today's dollars.
Ms. Karen, is that a motion?
Yes. I would make a motion to take the CPI.
There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion on taking the CPI? Sam Quaker.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'd speak against the motion, and here's why. What we've heard, is we've heard the compound effect of, a presentation on the compound effect on the city's budget on not taking the CPI. What we haven't been presented is the compound effect on the taxpayer of taking the CPI. The information that we were presented tonight was good, but it also should have included that compound effect, and also commercial and non-owner-occupied, which affects every, which ultimately would affect every renter in the, in the community as well. And I think that without additional discussion on, on other ways to fund the important items that were brought up two weeks ago, I think that taking the CPI as the first item on the agenda is not something that we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any discussion on the CPI? Mr. Wykamuck, please.
Thank you. I have made a vocal that I'm against the same. And the reason being is, one of the challenges we have as a city councilperson is to make calls based on facts. My fact is that our administrator, the mayor, has presented us with a budget that doesn't include an increase in the CPI. He's the firsthand person involved with the everyday operations of the city. To him, it doesn't seem to be a necessary thing to do. I also agree, there's an argument made for the fact of the compounding effect on taking this CPI. I think there's other, other factors that weigh into the fact on, when we talk about growth, and we talk about salaries, and we, and we have increased strains on our infrastructure with our, with our department heads and the people in the city, such as tax revenue districts that we've diverted funds for particular reasons, for particular growth reasons. Those funds have been diverted in the tune of, I'm assuming, I don't know what that number is, but I know in 2007, it was over $600,000. And I think at some point, it would be responsible for the city council as a whole to have a good debate about this, and have all the facts and weigh out the pros and cons, not just what the cumulative effect would be if we now take it. So that would be my argument, to not take the CPI. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any more discussion on taking the CPI? Alan Hanks, or Mayor Hanks, please?
Thank you, Deb. I think it's important that I clarify my position. I think it was, wasn't quite accurate, which was just stated in the fact that this is the second year that I have not included the CPI within the budget. But I've also included what I consider very important additional requirements that we have within the city, and that what I would request, that you actually take a look at taking the CPI. I've been very clear in my position, is the fact that although I do not include it in the budget, the reason I do not include it in the budget is because I did not want it to become automatic like it has been in the past. In the past, it's been automatically included in the budget. There was no discussion at this council level whether or not it was appropriate, and where to actually spend that, that additional money. So because of the, to suggest that the reason that, to suggest that it's, it's not important because I didn't include in the budget, I don't think is a fair analogy. The reason I didn't include it is because I want to make sure, before you take the CPI, that you have full discussion and determination that there is a need in this community. And I will tell you, and I've been very public this year, is the fact that I believe that need is there. The other thing I want to point out is the fact that I presented this council a balanced budget. Not only did I present you a balanced budget, I presented you a budget that actually rolled back about $300,000, or about half a percent. I actually went in, and I cut an awful lot of the departments because I knew it was going to be a rough year. If you add the CPI in, you know what you have? You have a budget that's exactly the same as it was last year, a zero-growth budget. So I have a hard time when folks start making the argument about that we're, that not to take the CPI because government is growing. In this case, that is not borne out in fact. Because even if you add the CPI back in, we're exactly where we were last year. I cut about 300, and I think it was a little over 300, help me out here, what was it, $320,000 out of the, out of the budget compared to last year? So even if you take the CPI, guess what? You have a zero-growth budget. And it becomes a little bit frustrating for me when people suggest that city government is growing when we have zero growth. You know, to forgive me, I get a little bit frustrated when people have a tendency to twist my words or try to state something that is not quite factual. Numbers don't lie. Even with the CPI, you have a zero-growth budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan Hanks. Questions, council? We do have a motion and a second on the floor to take the CPI. Any more discussion? All, sorry, Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I have been vocal that I think it's a responsible thing to do, but I don't know if I understand. I'd like to ask the mayor, based on what Karen said, if we agree that, you know, really this is just kind of, to take the CPI is keeping inflation at bay, so that we still have the same purchasing power for goods and services that we had the previous year, knowing that cumulative effect over a number of years, and then based on what you just said, that it's not automatic, and then gives the council an opportunity to have this discussion about it. And then if we take the CPI, it's still a zero-growth budget. All of those things, I think, are factual. Having said all that, why didn't you put the CPI in the budget? And we could still have a discussion on it, even if it's in the budget, we could still have a discussion on it and say, yes, let's take it, or no, let's not take it. So I don't think it would be automatic just because you put it in the budget. So I'd like for the mayor to answer that.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Alan Hanks.
Thank you for the question, Alderman Chapman. To me, it's a philosophical question, and that is the fact that in the past, I was on the council for six years, and when the CPI was included, I will just tell you, my experience is that it led up, it was never discussed. It was never brought forward. And the reason is, is because once it's put in the budget, it's easy to just gloss over it and not have those discussions, because it's built in automatically. My philosophy has always been transparency, open government, and you know what? If we're going to talk about taking the CPI, I think we need to talk about it, and we also need to make sure that the citizens of Rapid City understand the need for it. To me, it's all about transparency. Why do we need to take the CPI? Well, I can tell you, real quick, there's a couple of different reasons. One is $4 gas. Very simple. We spend a tremendous amount in gas every single year. I will tell you, we spend, we're going to spend more money on gas going from $3 to $4 than this entire increase in CPI. I can tell you, I know we will. I also know that everything we buy, we had a discussion the other night about road salt, that it's doubled. Everything we do has gone up. We're not, we're not any different than any other customer out there. And although I understand people struggle a little bit, you know what? The city is struggling trying to provide the same services, the services at the same level with less buying power every single year. And that is a real struggle. So like I say, I think Alderman Olson was exactly right. The CPA, CPI is specifically designed to try and keep up with inflation, to make sure that you're, the buying power, that tax dollar, remains constant. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alan Hanks. A follow-up?
Just before you let, yeah, just, I just want to make sure I understood. So the reason why you didn't include it, even though you agreed this year that maybe the council should take it, is just a philosophical reason for not taking it?
Well, it's a philosophical question of not automatically including it. I want to make sure that, that the council has a discussion, identifies that there is a need to take the CPI, and that way, that the folks in the community realize that we've had that discussion, and we've made that determination, instead of just automatically taking it. But, you know, there again, it's, it's always been a philosophical question for me, and yes, I've been very public this year. I had a heck of a time balancing this budget this year. You know, we actually, and we talk about coming back with a balanced budget. You can, you can talk to your staff, and they will tell you that we went in, and what was proposed versus what was actually presented to you. I think we cut out about $4.5 million, Pauline. Is that what we cut out, $4.5 to $5 million? Four and a half to five million dollars?
It was, I think it was two and a half million right out of the general fund.
Out of the general fund, yep. And, and the reason we did that was so we didn't go into reserves. We had, I could have presented a, a budget to you and dipped into the reserves and, and taken a 3% increase like we have in the past, but I didn't think that was the appropriate thing to do. I didn't think that was the responsible thing to do. So, we have a very tight budget, and anytime you have a very tight budget, you depend on those revenue sources. The other thing I will tell you is if, whatever your choice is, if, if you take the CPI or if you don't, if you don't take the CPI, I will tell you, you will not have the opportunity to do literally anything else in this budget without starting to talk about reducing employees. You literally can't do it. And so, if you have any desire to add, and I'm going to use an example, add a worker to the parks department like we've been talking about for the last four or five years, realistically you, you have to take the CPI because there's no other way really to fund it. Unless you want to go back and do something as drastic as freezing wages. And there again, philosophically, I think that's absolutely the worst thing you could possibly ever propose to the city is, is try to freeze wages. And the reason is, we just talked about it. People are struggling. Typically, we give adjustments and those adjustments, people count on it, and we've made obligations to our employees and, and I would, my philosophy has always been people over equipment and programs. And without those good employees, quite honestly, our service is going to absolutely suffer. It will go downhill. We have an incredible staff and quite honestly, it's taken us a number of years to recruit and retain the quality of staff that we have.
Thank you, Alan.
I'll get off my soapbox now.
Just a comment. Yeah, I appreciate your answer and I, again, I, I think it's a responsible thing to do to take the CPI every year, but I will ask this. I had an election this year and I guess I didn't have an election, so I'm on the council for two more years, so I'll, I'll go through this process again next year. If you're in the same seat next year, I would ask you now to include the CPI in the budget when you present the budget, and I will guarantee you that there will be a discussion about should it be there or not? Because I think it, it puts the council in a tenuous position to make it look and sound in the community that the council is now raising the property tax and the mayor has nothing to do with it. I don't think that at the end of the day, that the mayor can have it both ways. You can't not put it in the budget and then come and ask the council but fund these sorts of things over here. I, I think then that's the decision of the council of what, when it gets funded, if the council is going to take that CPI. So, my request now would be, put it in the budget next year, doesn't violate your philosophical reasoning of it, we'll have the, I guarantee we'll have a discussion.
Thank you, Malcolm Chapman. Sam Quaker, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Karen for clarification on the motion. Is your motion Karen, to take? To take the CPI or to take it and spend it on the list of items that Malcolm had presented two weeks ago?
No, hers, if I'm correct, it's just to take the CPI.
Okay. I'm not sure at what point is appropriate to, to, to discuss it, but in terms of growth in the budget, there is significant growth in terms of salaries for pay grades 22 and above of approximately seven and a half percent, and that is a, that is a concern. And we can prob, perhaps discuss that under item two, but there is indeed growth, significant growth in the budget.
And I kind of gave the mayor some leeway and I appreciate the council giving him leeway, he kind of went to the next step, but we have Ron Wyffenbach next and then Malcolm Chapman. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the mayor explaining some of his positioning, and I appreciate my colleague Alderman, Malcolm Chapman, for his explanation there. But I, I feel compelled to, to make sure that I make my point because my point wasn't that government's growing. That's not my point. My point is that the city of Rapid City is growing, the, the, the stresses on the infrastructure of our employees is growing at the same time. And we've made the conscious decision to divert some of those sales tax revenues for future revenues, and I just want my colleagues to keep that in mind. And having a conversation on the CPI is not a bad thing. This is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Malcolm Chapman and then Ms. Patty. Patty, sorry?
I just wanted to make a point. By allowing us to discuss the CPI as a separate thing, it gives the city council more direct control over how it is spent. I assume if it was part of, included in the budget before, the mayor had the choice of where it went as far as budget. And then it would've been pretty hard, I guess, for the city council to pick apart where the CPI went as far as if it was included, automatically included in the budget. This is a separate thing, we have more direct control over where it goes and more discussion of where the need more lies, which might differ from what the mayor. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Patty. Malcolm Chapman, please.
Just a comment on Sam's question about Karen's motion. Karen's motion, as I understood it, was to take the CPI. My point last week or whenever we met was to move us somewhere because we were stuck. We had four or five pages worth of unfunded things that we were talking about without a real way to whittle that down to something that was manageable. The point of my motion last week, and I didn't expect it to pass, I turned to Alderman Krepke on my left last time and said, will you make a substitute motion? I turned to Sam and asked him what he second a motion, so that there could be more discussion about the budget. I think that we did need to have more discussion, but we weren't moving anywhere, so I thought I put a motion out there. I, I like the motion that's on the floor to, to take the CPI and to keep it separate from what it should be funding. So, I mean, we, we will still have that control next year if the mayor puts it into the budget. I think we still have that control, and that's the challenge this council, I think, just doesn't get. We still have the opportunity right now, today and until the end of September, to go inside of this budget and find $337,000, which is equivalent to the CPI. We shouldn't get tied that the CPI equals what we, what I said, let's give to Black Hills Vision or the Doll or Wavy or Front Porch Coalition. They don't necessarily equate. We could find that money within the budget, and those are two different conversations in my, mine.
Thank you. We do have a motion on the floor by Karen, seconded by Lloyd. Any other discussion? Bill Krepke, please.
Thank you very much. You know, we always do things just because we've always been doing it. Ever since probably time immemorial, we've, we've always done things the same way. And we've all gone to classes, we've all gone to, we've all gone to League of Cities and we've all learned how to do budgeting and we've all learned how to do all this stuff. And it's almost like we come back and we forget. And we don't take these, these concepts, the procedures, the processes, and bring it to the table here. And I'd like to ask the mayor if I could, please, that, you know, I appreciate your hard work and the hard work that all the staff has done, but you said you cut $300,000 out of the budget? I mean, you, you, I, I wrote down, you said you cut down, you cut out $300,000?
The, the proposed budget this year was $300,000 less than the old eight budget. The 09 budget's $300,000 less than the 08 budget. If you're talking about what we actually cut out, which was actually requested by the departments, that equated, I think it was two and a half, three million dollars.
A gazillion dollars.
Yeah, a bunch of money that we don't have.
So, the question is, is that, if I may continue the conversation, so what based, what, how did you base that you required, that you needed to cut that 300,000?
Because I didn't believe it was, was responsible or appropriate to dip into our reserves. The council established a reserve of 15% of the general fund budget, which was about $6 million, and, and unless we went back and made those reductions from their requests, we would have dipped into those reserves by about two and a half million dollars.
You know, I, you know, I'll be the first one to be the, be the cheerleader for TIFs. And I've, you know, it's like, there's, there hasn't been hardly any that I didn't like, like Will Rogers and Never Met a Man He Didn't Like. But, you know, we, we go on the premise that we give these TIFs with the grand expectations that we're going to get significant sales tax from it. And the perfect example is, is Cabela's. You know, we're anticipating what they were saying, half a million to, to, to a million dollars in additional sales tax. You know, we can laugh about that, but if you look at it, if, you know, if you take 2% out of $5 million, that's, what's that, 300, 400,000, 500, whatever it is? Significant money is what I'm talking about. And that's just one. And I'm anticipating that the Rushmore Crossing is going to come online here pretty darn, pretty soon, and I suspect they'll be starting to generate additional sales tax. And it's not just monies that's going to be shifted from one store to another, one location to another location. We're talking new, new stores that's going to provide goods and services that we've never had before. So, my point is, is that, you know, I'm not going to ask you what, what, look in your crystal ball and say what is, how much of an increase are we going to have in sales tax, because I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I suspect it's going to be significant. And I suspect that, that $300,000 will be, be more than adequately replaced by this additional sales tax. So, my question to you is that would it be that inappropriate to say to you, the mayor and the staff, to anticipate that additional $300,000 in, in sales tax that we, if we believed what we've been saying all along, that these, these TIFs are going to generate additional sales tax, then it's probably appropriate to, to challenge you and the staff to say, maybe there is an opportunity to stick that $300,000 back in there. And where I'm going with is that if we can do that, we don't have to take the CPI. Isn't there, isn't it a, isn't there an opportunity that, you know, and I appreciate all the work that staff did putting these numbers together, and, and if you don't take them all four years, you can easily come up with a, with a great deal of money, but just one year, just once, can't we just tell the, the taxpayers of Rapid City and Pendleton County that, you know, we're going to give this back to you? Just once, just once. I know it's not a big deal, it's a dollar, it's a dollar a month and only $12 a year, but can't we just tell the taxpayers that we, we're going to try to help you just once? I think that's appropriate to do that. And if we can anticipate the TIFs or the, the additional sales tax to cover this 300,000 and put that in, then we don't have to take the CPI. And so, I truly believe in my heart of hearts that that's going to happen. I think we have the, the capacity and, and the potential here in Rapid City, since we are growing and whatnot, that we can meet that $300,000 that the CPI is going to give us. So, with that logic, with that logic that we should have an opportunity to say just one time to the taxpayers that we're going to cut you a break, just one year at least, so that we're not always saying that CPI, by gosh, is a guarantee. So, I'm not going to support this, I'm not going to support this motion because I believe in my heart of hearts that, that this $300,000 will be more than replaced by, by the additional sales tax that we're going to get.
Bill, did you have a question for the mayor?
Well, no, I was not a question, that's just.
I thought I said I had a question for the mayor.
Well, it was, it was the $300,000 and, and, you know, the challenge to, that you believe that there's a possibility that, or a, a good possibility that this 300,000 could be replaced and your budget could reflect the additional sales tax that you may not have had.
Let me respond just very quick, very quickly, just so you know, how, how we have traditionally and we continue to make estimates as far as sales taxes, we look historically at what the sales tax have been, how it's been increasing. This year, 4.5, where are we at as far as increase? 4.35%, which is almost a full point higher than what we were predicting last year at 3.5%. So, we took, we took some of that crystal ball vision as far as seeing an increase in taxes, but even adding that additional basically point in there, I was very, still very concerned, and I, and I will tell you, we've been somewhat fortunate because Rapid City's been somewhat isolated and insulated from the rest of the economy. But, you have to remember, we're dealing with a budget that doesn't start until December and doesn't end until the, literally the, well, starts January 1 and doesn't end till December 31 of 2009. So, we're trying to look literally not quite a year and a half out into the future, and my crystal ball isn't that clear. And if I'm going to err, I would rather err on the side of being conservative because if sales tax revenue come in above that, this city council has the ability to go out and look at the needs and do supplementals to the budget. Now, on the other hand, if it comes in below, now we're looking at reserves or we're looking at cutting programs or cutting people. And so, I guess I have a tendency to be extremely fiscally conservative in, in making those projections, and I'd rather be pleased on the backside than disappointed. And knowing that if we're pleased, we have the ability to go out and hire the additional park workers, the, or the additional police officers or the additional staff and, and add in those programs that we couldn't include in that budget. But to me, I would rather be conservative than too liberal with the estimates and be disappointed and then try to figure out how we're going to actually pay for everything. Because the reality of it is, once you put a program or a person in, you can't take it away, not without a huge fight.
You know, I appreciate you being conservative and, and I'm sure all of us around this table are too, because we don't want to, we don't want to do anything that would jeopardize our, our community. But let me ask you this question, to, you, you said you used 4.3% sales tax? So, the, the growth from two, for, for last year, for 2007 was 4.3? And so, so if we continue with 4.3, we have an increase or, or we're anticipating the same amount of sales tax?
The projected sales tax revenue for 2009, help me out, Pauline, here, is basically 4.3% above the 2008, and actually, it's a little bit more complicated because what we do is we add two years together.
I'm getting ahead of you too, so.
To actually come, to actually have a moving average to determine what the estimated sales tax revenue is. Pauline, you probably have it right in front of you, don't you?
I do. In the past, when they projected revenue for sales tax, it's always been, if it was for 2008, they would look at 2006, add 3% and then add another 3%. Well, what we did for 2009 is we took the 2007 actual, added 4% and added 4%. So, for 2009, it's actually a 5.81% increase over 2008. So, we already took some of that into consideration.
So, thank you, Pauline. So, if you wanted to go this extra $300,000 in additional sales tax, what percentage would that be of an increase than what we're talking about? I mean, 2%? 2% for 300,000?
For additional.
Well, one and a half.
So, you're saying we, we'd have to increase five and a half to, five and a half percent increase to get just $300,000 additional money?
Pauline Sumption, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We estimated 18.6 million dollars in sales tax revenue for 2008. So, a 1% increase is only $180,000. So, for every 1% you increase it, you increase your additional revenue by 180,000.
If you're talking 300, you're talking 12%.
Correct.
And that go from 5% up to, I'd estimate 7% increase.
That's correct.
We only get 18 million dollars in sales tax?
In the general fund. That's the, just the general fund sales tax. We get about 43 million total, but it's split between four different funds.
Ms. Pauline, sorry, guys. We have a question from Ron Wyffenbach, please.
Pauline, I just wanted to note, 18.6 million from sales tax? How much from property tax?
In 2008, we estimated 11.6 million dollars in property tax for the general fund and 18.6 million for sales tax in the general fund.
If you actually look in the front of your book, you can actually see the sales tax. Now, keep in mind, the 18 million dollars is only a portion of what we get in sales tax. That's the general fund sales tax. I mean, there, there's 2012, there's triple B, I mean, there's all kinds of different things that we get. Do you have that, Pauline?
Okay, that's, that's true.
Mr. Krepke, did you have a motion with your discussion? Excuse me, sir.
No, I don't need a motion.
Thank you. Sorry, Alan.
And just there again, point of clarification, when, when we're talking budget, even though we have a overall budget of $127 million, but really, what we always talk about is a general fund budget, which is about 45 million dollars. Because everything else is basically enterprise funds, which means that they basically are self-supporting. So, you know, even though it, you know, it sounds like 127 million dollars, an awful lot of money, that's typically money that basically goes in and out to provide services. So, really what we're talking about is 45 million dollars, and to get that 45 million dollars, what you start doing is you start adding up the sales tax, plus the property tax and some fees that we get, and that's how we come up with 45 million dollars, including, keep in mind, the unencumbered cash that we get a rollback from last year, which was, there again, about two and a half million dollars short of where it should have been, which put us in the situation we're in this year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Hanks. Council, we do have a motion on the floor. Council, we do have a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion on CPI? Malcolm Chapman, please.
It seems as if we've had a lot of latitude, so I'm not going to ask a question about CPI. Just going to ask it just to, or throw out a basic comment. I'm starting to question if the council is even ready to discuss this. It seems to me that this was budgeting 101 that we just went through. And we, we have questions about how the, I mean, how sale, I mean, how the money even comes into the system. I mean, I question if we're ready to even seriously talk about the issues of CPI and looking into the budget. I, I just question that.
Okay, thank you, Malcolm Chapman. We have a motion by Karen to take the CPI and a second by Lloyd. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Could we have roll call, please, Jackie? Adcock?
Aye.
Akrepki?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Wyfembuck?
No.
Olson? Broger? Quaker? Motion carries on a vote of three to six. Thank you, Jackie. Council, we are now on to mayor's budget. Thank you for the discussion. I appreciated the discussion. It was very good discussion and we are on now on mayor's budget. If you have questions on the mayor's budget or you would like to change things on the mayor's budget, we can put that on the board for the changes. So we have a list. Or we can have Pauline, either one, write those down if we do have some changes on the mayor's budget. So, council, as you wish, would we like it to be put on the board or of the changes? If there's any changes, or we would just like Pauline to read those back for us? What would the council wish to make it easier for them to see if there's any changes? I brought the board here for that reason. Sometimes it's easier to see what you want to change than it is just to have somebody read it back. Karen Olson, please.
It's definitely helpful to have it on the boards that we are looking at it in the dollar amount.
Thank you, Ms. Karen.
So that's very helpful.
Thank you. If the council wishes, Lloyd Akroy?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I think the only thing that I, I've thought about in the changing of this was, you know, I thought heavy on the, on the 100,000 that the mayor put in for Destination Downtown. And I've thought heavy on the growth management part, losing or relocating two people in their department. And, and the cut was like 56,000 dollars. So I guess what I'd like to see was probably take.
Lloyd, just, just one second. What's on the floor, the motion is if we should put it on the board and I think.
Sure, that's what I'm just about ready to say.
Sorry.
So. So what I'd like to do is take 28,000, which is half of that 56 that she's getting cut from that 100,000.
Okay.
And that's what it would be on the board.
So you would say, put, let's put it on the board. That's okay, council. Looks like we want to have these on the board. Thank you, Lloyd. Sorry to interrupt you. I was trying to figure out.
I think, I think that's a compromise. It's half. It gives them working room to work through the following years is my reason for that.
Thank you, Pauline, for writing these down for us. We appreciate that. We're putting changes on the mayor's budget on the board so everybody understands what everybody wants to do on the mayor's budget, if that's okay? Give me just a sec, Sam. So she's got that before we go on. And then if you would, council, if you make a change, make sure she writes the right thing for you. I appreciate that. Is that correct?
No, I think Destination Downtown has 100,000 and half of what Growth Management's losing, Fit Gates, that'd be 28, wouldn't it? 56, yeah.
You want to take the 100,000 away?
No, just minus 28,000 from the 100.
So Destination would have not 28,000? Okay. Will you put the 72 up there showing the difference of what he's talking about? I think Sam was next, if we could, please.
So we're not going to talk about what?
List the changes, if we could.
I have three items that I would like to add. One is the mayor council travel budget. And I'm going to propose a reduction to 30,000. I don't know what the exact dollar amount is of the proposed budget.
It's 45 or something like that.
45 or 230.
45 to 30. That way we have the 45 to 30, so we know where it went from. If you would put the 45 on there, Ms. Pauline, that way we knew.
I'll put the 45 left.
Okay. Okay, so went from 45 to 30. Okay, thank you, Sam. Next.
I would also like to have the opportunity to discuss the three scheduled step increases for pay grades 22 and above to 7.5%. And I would like to discuss the option of delaying two or three steps. I would like to.
Can you send it now? Give me a second.
We just write the 7.5% being pay increases for pay grades 22 and above.
Give me just a minute.
And that is, if we took all three steps, it would be 350,583.
Say that total one more time, please, Sam.
350,583 divided by three is approximately 115,000 per step. But I'd like to be able to discuss the possible delayed implementation. And then, ma'am chair, my last item is, we had a letter here from Wavy.
Okay.
And I, I, I believe that it's appropriate to hear, hear that situation and to talk about funding for.
Okay. Do you have a, a change on Wavy that you want on the budget and then we can have a discussion? Please, Sam.
Malcolm, can I answer a question? Well, two weeks ago, you mentioned 25,000. What was the split between Wavy and the court? Three quarters one way and a quarter the other way based on services. It's what the police department said in terms of how they utilize the service.
I think it was 18 and 12, if I'm correct. I remember 18.
You could add, you could add Wavy, I'll do that.
What we'll do, council, if that's okay, sorry, Sam, is we'll write.
18750 and 6250.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. What we're doing is listing all these. That way we can go through and vote on them. Or do you want to change it or not change it kind of thing? I think it'd be easier to get the list first. We do have Malcolm Chapman and then Ms. Karen after that. Okay, Karen Olson?
Mine was a question about defining. My question is, each council member is allocated a monthly, I think it's 75 dollars. 100 dollars, I think. Is it 100? For travel, 75. Isn't it 75?
Sorry, Ms. Karen.
So I was right. So you get it, is that number calculated into this 45,000? That's a second. Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Bill Akrepki, please.
Thank you. Is it possible to, in, in being consistent with the rest of them, instead of saying that I'm going to find the 28,000 from Destination Rapid City, just, just say the Growth Management's 28,000, figure out what the price, where the money's going to come from there?
That's where it's coming from, is from Destination.
So you want it, you want to cut specifically?
That's where I located it from, so.
Bill, and not to interrupt you guys, first we'll go through it and then we can all, but that was, I appreciate that. Little bit of leeway, but right now, we're just making the list and then we'll go through and we'll have a discussion on each and vote, vote on each, if that's okay, council. Any other changes to the mayor's budget? Ron Wyfembuck?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I just wanted to add back the 75,000 pledge that the city made, Black Hills Vision, and 50,000 back to economic development. I feel that those are two important items.
Bill, Pauline's assumption?
You know, I just think there's a three-page list that I had handed out that has the combined priority list, if you guys need reminders.
Right.
There's some items that you specifically wanted on there versus the general ones.
And at this point, we're talking about mayor's budget, so, thank you, Ms. Pauline. Bill Akrepki, please.
Thank you. This may be a question for the police chief. This, this new position that for fingerprinting, is that a full-time, I mean, is that 2,000 hours or is that something sick? Because somewhere around the way I heard, it was like 300 hours a year.
Bill, are you asking him because you need to change something in the budget? Could I ask you that question?
Well, I'm just saying, if it's 300 hours, I'm not so sure that, that we should consider a full-time equivalent person for that.
How about if we put that down in the discussion and when it comes through, then we'll put that down instead of asking the question? Because everybody else is not getting the question.
Okay, we can ask a question later.
Would you like to write that, sorry, chief, would you like to put that on the board, if that's okay, Mr. Akrepki? Thank you, sir. Any other changes to the mayor's budget or anything we want to talk about on the mayor's budget? Karen Olson?
I would like to talk about the Doll Center's operation costs, which they have throughout the process of requesting the expansion of the building. I think they've been very responsible in sharing with us what they believe are the ongoing costs with the larger building.
Okay.
And I, my understanding that is that that is 66,000 dollars.
Okay.
And I, at some point, I might call on Linda just to make certain, there are two items that she's looking at and.
Thank you, Ms. Karen.
To know if that's included.
At that point, if the council wants to open it up to public discussion on some of these, because they might know the answers, that would be up to the council. Any other items to be discussed on mayor's budget?
Thank you, ma'am chair. I forgot one item. I know it was 20,000 for the copier for the city attorney.
Thank you, Ron.
Bill Akrepki, please.
Thank you. Let's not forget the 9/11.
Malcolm Chapman?
I just have a question. I, I mean, I, I understand how we started off. Lloyd started off saying, let's take some money from my place and let's add something to the budget. I mean, a lot of these items at the end are, are items that people, I mean, they, they aren't in the mayor's budget. So I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused.
Well, at this point, we can say, when we go through that funding source, CPI, because when we go through this, people are going to have to know where that funding source is that brought this up. Or where the, what they're changing in the mayor's budget in order to fund what they brought up.
You, and I know we just put them up there. I would almost request that because we just had a discussion on CPI where people didn't want to take extra money.
Which I understand.
But now people want to put extra things on the board. I mean, so where is that money coming from?
That's what's going to come through when the discussion comes, Mr. Chapman. You have to have a funding source at that point. So, thank you. Any other discussion on changes on mayor's budget? This is the list first and then at that point, it'll be, you need, there's going to need to be a funding source. So if you are making changes at that point to the mayor's budget where you're going to take something and put something back in, that's where the funding is going to come from. So that will be the discussion. Any other, Mr. Akroy, please.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I guess I'm just as confused as Malcolm is because I identified a, a funding source from the mayor's budget. That's what we were talking about. If this is the way we're going to do it, then I want to add the CBB, the chamber, you know.
I think, can I, can I stop the discussion just for a second? I think some of these people that are bringing this up, they're taking it from the mayor's budget. They're not taking it from the CPI, if I'm correct.
No, my understanding that this is all from the mayor's budget.
They're going to take it from the mayor's budget.
Okay.
Because the discussion at this point is the mayor's budget. It's not CPI. Am I correct, council?
There's a lot of stuff that there is on the board.
Okay, but they need a. Right. Yes, sir.
My suggestion is, if you ask Pauline to write you out, that you would pass the way that dollar amount happens.
The CPI amount, Sam? 337. And maybe I'm going about this wrong. And if I, I could probably use some help and I'll just tell you right now. What, what my point was, was for mayor's budget changes. And if you were going to change things in the mayor's budget, then that's what should be on the board. So if we have to delete items that aren't coming from the mayor's budget, that's the discussion at this point, council members.
I'm asking the council because I, I mean, I'm challenging the council a little bit. So we just had this lengthy discussion about CPI, whether we should take it or not take it.
Yes.
And the council voted to take it, so I guess we'll, we'll take the CPI, at least at this stage. I mean, it still has to go through a couple readings and at the diocese and all. And vehemently, council members argued not to take that money because it's a bad thing.
Right.
But now we should use that money on things that they think are important.
I didn't say that.
I, I didn't say, you said that. I'm just, I'm challenging the council. I, that's why I say I like the way Lloyd did it. Lloyd said, I think that we ought to take 28,000 from Destination Imagination, I mean Destination Rapid City. There is a Destination Imagination. Destination Rapid City, and we ought to put that money to Growth Management. It has nothing to do with CPI.
Yeah, that's what my understanding was first, like the Destination Growth Management, taking money on the travel budget, doing whole fund, the Wavy and the Ford, just that was my understanding with the budget. Something on the mayor's budget to put it where something else, nothing, nothing to do with CPI.
Thank you. And I guess that's my understanding, is to go through these. And if, I thought that at this point, some people understood that this wasn't CPI, that we're talking about the mayor's budget, Malcolm. So I, hold on just a sec, Malcolm. Let me finish, please. So we are talking on the mayor's budget. The CPI discussion was the last discussion. And I apologize if we're not getting my point and maybe I didn't make it correctly. If you are putting these on the list, this is for the mayor's budget. These are changes in the mayor's budget. If they don't belong there, when we go through this list, I'm pretty sure that will be made a point. And when it comes to like Growth Management and they want to change that or he has changed that, then that will be the discussion. When it comes to travel and mayor and council to, from 32, he can cut that budget at that time. It doesn't come from CPI. So some of the discussion, and if the discussion is 911 and Bill brought that up, he didn't want the CPI, maybe he's taking it from something from the mayor's budget. So maybe I'm wrong, Malcolm. Malcolm Chapman?
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Malcolm.
And then we put 337,000 up there, as if all of this stuff is then coming from the CPI increase that we're talking about.
I didn't put that up there.
Okay.
Thank you. Mayor Hanks?
Madam Chairman, or Madam President, if I may just make a point. I understand what you're saying, but keep something in mind. When the council just voted to accept the CPI, you in essence just added 337,000 to my proposed budget.
Right.
And so I think what you need to take a look at is the overall budget, which includes both my recommendations plus the 337. I don't think there's any distinction now between CPI, the vote on CPI and what the mayor's proposed budget was, because now it's included. Keep in mind is, once you did, once you voted to take the CPI, now you do have an additional 337,000 in the budget. And I guess that's the way I've always, my philosophy has always been is, once you've accepted it, you just basically, by that vote, you amended my proposed budget.
Okay. I'm going to apologize. I didn't know who was next to speak. Ron, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate the mayor speaking. He quite eloquently explained the situation.
He quite eloquently explained the situation. Bottom line is, it's the taxpayers' dollars, it all goes into the budget. I was vehemently against the CPI. Does that mean I might as well just go home? Or do I have an opportunity to help the rest through, the rest of this process of this budget? I think he handled it eloquently, I'll leave it at that.
I think last time, what we did is, we put everything together, and the discussion was, I think we didn't go too far, so I put it in a separate, and it does come together, and I understand that. If the wish is now, this CPI list, because we have the three thirty-seven, and I understand that was a good understanding what the mayor just said, then we should make this list for everything, and if that's the council's determination at this point, let's do a, I don't know if we do a motion on it, or if someone has a suggestion of a motion, that we just take the three thirty-seven and the mayor's budget together, if I could have that motion. Karen, please.
I agree with the mayor, I mean, we've added this number of dollars to the discussion, and I voted to take the CPI, so I feel justified in adding something to this.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to put both together, Ms. Karen?
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to have that motion. I think we now understand we're talking about additional dollars in the budget.
Okay, so we'll just write everything that we want to put down on here, go through the list, and vote on it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, counsel.
Identify a fund when we do it.
And identify a fund, thank you, Lloyd. Thank you, counsel, maybe I was just the only one confused, and I apologize for that. Patty, please.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my understanding was that we would, like, the CPI, I guess, is now part of the budget, but we were, like, moving money from within the budget, and then, whatever left over would be, we dip into the CPI fund. I guess I understand the mayor's point, because it's all in the budget now, so, as far as, we're just simply debating what items to include, and then, after that, would be, where are we pulling the money from, either from the other items in the budget, or from the CPI.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Patty. Pauline Sumption.
With all due respect-
Ladies first.
I do want to point out that just because you added the CPI on the revenue side, does not necessarily mean you have to add any expenditures. Instead of adding three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of expenditures, you can take it away from the undesignated cash, so instead of using one point seven million dollars, we'd only use about one point four million dollars. So, just for that clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Pauline. Lloyd LaCroy, please.
Thank you. Now that, now that we're back on track, I'm gonna-
Thanks, Lloyd.
Since we're making the list, I'm going to try and complete it. Black, I think we got Black Hills Vision up there, yeah, we do. Do we have Economic Development for fifty thousand? Okay, do we have the Chamber that wanted three? And CBB for eighteen thousand? And Lifeways for fifty?
Thank you, Lloyd. Patty, please.
Well, as long as we're making a list and checking it twice, I guess I would like to, may I have the maintenance supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department for our sixty-nine thousand six hundred?
Thank you, Patty. Any others for the list, since we're, come on, Ron. Any others to add to the list? This would be the unfunded list, if I'm correct, at this point, I mean, maybe I said that wrong, sorry.
I'd like to add some money to the porta-potties. As much as you want. Fifty thousand.
We're going to make motions, we identify a source as we go?
No, we're going to go through them and make motions, and where the source. Any others for the list? This will be the unfunded list. Ron Kroger, please. This is probably a question for Pauline. Karen? It's Ron.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're okay, thank you, Ms. Karen.
I'm not going to add anything on the list, but I really think it's kind of hilarious that we had the discussion for CPI, we had people speak vigorously opposed to taking it, and then we start throwing, then they start throwing all this stuff on the list to be funded. And I'm going back to what Malcolm was talking about. You know, Lloyd started it out, and he had stuff he wanted put on there, and he moved money around to do that. I think it's true for the individuals that made a case for the CPI, that they say that I want that money taken out of CPI, or otherwise give us some other funding that they want reduced. I mean, that's, you know, you can't have it both ways, in my opinion.
Ron Wykowicki.
I think it is appropriate that I speak, because I assume that some of these are being targeted against me, and that's fine. I made a motion to, the last time we met, to change things without adding to the CPI. The fact is, when the council makes a decision, I'm going to live with it, just as I do every Monday night.
Any others to be added to the list? What we'll do is go through the list, and put the funding source, and then add the totals, and at that point, if I'm correct, like we usually do, we'll figure out what the total is, and if we still have to cut some, or vote on some, so we get to the total that we have. I think that's where we're going. Malcolm Chapman.
I guess I just have a question about the process for how we get there. Obviously, I think the total that's been added to the budget, like, is the three thirty-seven plus, I guess, a hundred and forty, or a hundred and thirty, the salaries and the travel? So, we've added a half million dollars to the budget, and it's probably more than a half million dollars up there, if we do just what's up there.
End of the funding source, is it, some people might not be using the CPI.
Okay, but, so let's just say, for instance, what we have up there is a wash, but if it's not, and we vote as we go along, you could get to the end, and somebody really wants the porta-potties, but it's no money for the porta-potty, so I mean, how, are we going to have an overall discussion about what's-
Okay.
Before we start voting on individual items?
Where the funding source is.
Before we vote, then?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other things to be added to the list at this point? If not, we'll go through the list and identify a funding source, or where the direction is that the council member that brought it up would like to go. Lloyd LaCroy is first, if I'm correct?
Yes, with Destination, I identified twenty-eight thousand to go back to Growth Management, to fund at least half of the, her budget that she lost for an employee. And I identified it from Destination Downtown, the simple fact that, when they said, when they came forward, what they were looking for, they were just starting out this year, and in fact, he said they needed about forty-six thousand dollars for Destination Downtown to hire on as secretary administrator. So I thought seventy-two is more than enough for them to get started for this, for next year, and this would give Growth Management a chance to, instead of losing two people, at least cut back to just one, not completely, and then wean their way off if they decide they need that one. That's why I came up with that, that number. I've got other ones on there, but what, we were going to wait till that comes through, but that's, that's my reasoning behind that.
So the funding source was from the mayor's, it's still in the mayor's budget, and you just flipped a couple of things on there?
Yeah, I just flipped it from one to the other.
Thank you, Lloyd. Next is mayor and council travel. I think we're going to go through these to make sure that we know where the funding source is, because they'll be adding, if I'm correct, they'll add the totals at the end, or the motion, I guess what's easier?
Has an offer of reduction in your council, however, on a principle, forty-five thousand, forty-six, whatever, thirty?
So yours is just for a reduction, and not taking, there's, what, fifteen thousand left? Something else? Okay. And then, the pay grades?
Well, I'll briefly explain my position on this. There, and I presented the information that comes last week, hopefully you had a chance to digest it. There are three one-step pay increases scheduled for next year, for the four, seven and a half, eleven more percent, for, Lloyd, pay rates, twenty-two and above, approximately seven people. And I believe that, you know, that the reality of this is that, at one time, we were having an issue, may I allow me to make a partial argument here?
Yes, sir.
At one time, we were having an issue recruiting to pay rates twenty-two and above, and remember the discussions, we were already having a problem. We no longer have that issue, I believe. In light of that, and the tightened budget, another seven and a half percent pay increase for our highest-paid positions is not warranted, and I think that a delayed implementation is appropriate, especially why the issues the school district is experiencing. And I think that there's three steps scheduled. My proposal would be, take one in January oh nine, delay the other two to twenty-ten. Take one in oh nine, delay the other two to twenty-ten, and that would be cost savings of approximately two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. So, that's my explanation on that, on that thing.
So the funding would be, you would just create a funding source, which would make us, or make that two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two, if we did, you put the three steps, one in oh nine, and two in oh ten?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Malcolm. Sorry. Sam?
Explain my Wavy item.
Yes.
We have received a letter tonight from Wavy, explaining the situation of, from their perspective, in two thousand and five, the council had added twenty-five thousand dollars to the Police Department budget, specifically used for Wavy. And I remember this specifically, because I helped lead the effort to do this. There isn't a lot that I can rattle about anymore up here, but I am lit up about the fact that this council, and I believe it was unanimous, several years, put twenty-five thousand dollars in the Police Department budget, specifically for Wavy, and it was held back from them. And I want this looked into, and I am not happy about this. And I worked very hard along with other council members to get this included in the budget, and find out several years later that this was denied to Wavy, and presented as discretionary funds, is absolutely wrong. And I am really upset about it. And we can either talk about it tonight, or we can talk about it another time, but somewhere along the line, there was a real, real mess-up, where Wavy was denied these funds that were specifically authorized in an ordinance several years ago, and I'm not blaming the current, I'm not blaming Mayor Hanks, who's way before his time, but I am really upset about it.
Thank you. Guys, I think we're going to go through the list, the people are going to explain things, and then, when we vote on them, I think that's when we should have the discussion on if we don't want to fund it, or do, and why we, if Sam goes through his thing, and Malcolm wants to have that discussion, maybe I'm wrong, but I think that's kind of where we're going, is the funding source, so. And this funding source for the twenty-five thousand was from, because it was already in the budget, am I correct, Sam? I don't-
No. No, it would, I mean, I structured a motion that takes money from some things, funds some other things, and I can either offer that out later, but-
Okay, so your funding was, you were going, if I recall, you were going to split the Wavy-
Right.
Okay.
We're going to fund Wavy and fund split.
Okay, so we have that list down, and now, okay, thank you, so it already has a funding source. I can't see the list, Miss Pauline. Thank you. Mr. Wykowicki, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've made this motion, and I'll explain where I'm going through this again. Seventy-five thousand dollars to Black Hills Vision was a pledge that we made, I think it was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over a period of five years. We're at the end of that fifth year, and then, the fifty thousand dollars from Economic Development is support that we've given them in the past, has been successful. They're in, they're in the midst of change right now, change in leadership, providing a dynamic view for the future, and I believe that's necessary to keep funding them. I think they're a tool for the citizens of our city, to help search out jobs, job opportunities for them. Twenty thousand dollars to the city attorney's office for the copier, I think it's a necessity. And then, the fifty thousand dollars is probably a little bit too much for the porta-potties, I'm going to put that at twenty thousand dollars, and the reason I did that, I was at a council meeting the other day, and it was brought to my attention that- Okay. Okay, we'll discuss that later. But I wanted to make a change from Destination Downtown Rapid City, to move that to two thousand and ten's budget, as of the Black Hills Vision, seventy-five thousand dollars, this will be the last year for that, so I'd like to move Destination Rapid City to two thousand and ten. I'd like to cut the travel budget by twenty thousand dollars, and where does that put me, a hundred and twenty, or the end? I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit lost in the numbers, but with the rest of it, I wanted to come out of unused cash. Destination Rapid City, a hundred thousand dollars, move that, I wanted to move that to two thousand and ten, so. Right, I understand that, but I was, I was challenged to, to identify what my reasoning was, and my rationale, and how I came out with these numbers, so. Yeah, from forty-five to twenty, so twenty-five thousand. No, for, yeah, whatever it is from forty-five, that's twenty thousand, and the rest, I think, is forty-five thousand, or fifty-five thousand, from undispersed cash.
Okay, so your funding source for those, the travel is good, but you're funding the Economic Development, and? Ron, you're funding Economic Development and Black Hills Vision through?
Through Moving Destination Rapid City, Moving Destination Rapid City to two thousand and ten, because two thousand and nine is the last year that Rapid City had pledged that seventy-five thousand dollars, so next year, there'll be seventy-five thousand dollars.
So there was seventy-five thousand for, I can't see your chart, if you'd move your-
Twenty-five thousand for Black Hills Vision, twenty, or thirty thousand for the enhanced development cost, twenty thousand for the addition of projects.
Okay.
Twenty thousand for the porta-potty.
Which is a total of what? Okay, so you need a funding source of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Thank you. Pauline, next.
Would be the Doll, probably, the fingerprint technician, if you want to talk about it.
Okay. Bill, the fingerprint technician, the funding source?
My argument was, if it was three hundred, three hundred hours, do we need anything happen? I mean, can't we shift something around to, I mean, once again, this really isn't our business to figure out where the money comes from. We need to set the policy, and let the staff and the, and the mayor figure this thing out, in my opinion. I mean, we're beating ourselves up pretty good, and, you know, we lost a lot of friendships last year because of this beating up of each other for this mere three hundred thousand dollars. You know, we should say, here's the policy, this is what we want to happen, figure it out, and come back with the solution for us, to either say yes or no. You know, we're just, we're going through all this, and we have only just a small fraction of the information that we need, when we need a whole big picture, and we never get the whole big picture, and it's, and I'm not saying anything bad, or I'm not criticizing the staff and the mayor, but we don't have the big picture. And we went from forty-nine million dollars to forty-five million dollars from last year.
Bill, right now, we're going through the list, and I understand where you're coming from, but at this point-
Well, you're asking where the, where the money's coming from.
Well, we had a process, and everybody agreed on this process at this point, and this, I'm just following the council's, what they wanted to do, Bill.
Well, I understand that, I was just, this was my, my take and my understanding, and I was just sharing that with people, and actually, this, you know, I was told at some point in time, there was three hundred dollars, and if it's three- at some point in time, there was three hundred dollars, and if it's three hundred dollars, maybe we don't need it.
Thank you.
And I was suggesting, instead of finding money to fund it, is take that money and throw it in the back of the pot.
Thank you. Um, what's next, please?
Doll for sixty-six thousand.
And that was Karen?
Yeah?
Your funding source for the doll?
CPI.
Thank you, ma'am. The next one is?
Chamber, CBB, and Life, was it, were you wrong?
CPI.
Thank you. Uh, maintenance parks?
Yeah, um, well, these might, um, were the maintenance, I was just thinking it up through CPI.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am, and additional comment is for...
Go ahead, Ms. Patty.
Um, we're, uh, should we, I, I guess, my, can, we don't have, we're kind of getting sort of late, I suppose. Um, I would like to see this more formalized rather than having it all scribbled down on, on this kinda thing, I would like to see like a spreadsheet or something that more cl- more clearly identifies the numbers we're talking about, where we would like to see it pulled from, and then we can see comparisons of how much we're gonna see out of the budget, how much we're gonna take out of CPI, and see there's some sort of plan we can make between the both.
And, and if the council would like to do that, Ms. Patty, when we find the funding sources, um, that's the council's wish, um, that can happen.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Pauline?
I speak over nine-one-one dispatch.
Nine-one-one, nine-one-one dispatch?
Fifty thousand five seventy-one.
And that was?
I think I did that, and I, no, I didn't say fifty thousand.
Bill? Your funding source, Bill? Please?
I think it's buttoned someplace.
Okay. I guess, uh, when, what we're asking, because other people are finding the funding sources, we wanted to know where you were taking the fifty thousand from.
I'm, I'm probably being disrespectful to you, and I apologize. I suppose if it has to come out of CIP, it comes out of CIP.
CPI.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, you're all right.
I'm a little dyslexic sometimes. Uh, I'm just hoping that, you know, this is, this is one of the things that government should be doing. I mean, if there's one thing, and that's public safety, and that's what nine-one-one's all about. And if we have to dig, I mean, if we, if we agree to all this other stuff, and, and we, we zeroize the, the monies, then we, then we probably need to figure out some other place to find this money, so.
So your funding source is CPI, Mr. Bill?
Wherever you'd like.
Oh, that'd be your motion? Or not your motion, I'm sorry, you're...
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. Um, CVB is next? I'm sorry, Ms. Karen, we're not on the, I mean, we're not on the parks yet, if that's okay. CVB? And that was, we already said CPI, thank you.
And Life, please.
And Life, CPI.
Or on the maintenance and parks.
Okay, maintenance and parks, and Patty had talked about that, I apologize. Ms. Karen?
Porta-potties, no.
Ms. Karen had a question on it?
I think they're relative to porta-potties and, and maintenance, right?
Most of the things we've talked about, except for, um, the one that Lloyd is talking about, are, are, are people, and, um, if they come from CPI, that's a one-year choice, that's not a part of the, I mean, that's not an annual, I mean, that should be a one-time, so I need to ask Pauline or someone to understand, I mean, the, he's, he wants to take twenty thousand out of the budget, which he has identified, if I'm correct, through, Ron, I can't remember.
Undisperished cash.
I, I wasn't talking about Ron's, I was really talking about what Patty was talking about, she was talking about the maintenance part, the park maintenance supervisor. I mean, that'll be an ongoing position, we're gonna have to fund that every year.
But this year it's coming out?
So is that the appropriate?
That's true.
So it, that's not, in my view, that, and I'm, I'm asking, 'cause I don't know for sure. It doesn't seem to me that's, CPI is the right place to fund that from, because that is a, um, not a one-time expense, that will be an annual expense.
Okay, so would you like to cross that off the list? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not suggesting crossing off the list, I'm just saying...
Okay, when that comes up, we can vote on that and bring that...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pauline, in reference to Karen Gunderson Olson's question, CPI, once we take it, that's a permanent fixture, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, what we take today is permanent, it'll be there forever.
That's the first step, it's still there, then that's your, your...
Yep. It's, it's, it's like putting, it's, it's there forever.
So then, right, right, should I answer my question, or should I wait?
Um...
I'll answer it.
So in other words, a salary is an appropriate part, so when we add a salary as a part of this discussion, that's an appropriate discussion in terms of, of the fact that we've decided to take the CPI.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's really what I wanted to know.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Okay.
So what we're really, thank you. So what we're really saying here is, is that we're adding an FTE to this, to this, uh, to what we're doing here, 'cause that's, you're, you're saying we're adding an FTE for this year, and then we'll worry about finding it the following years after that.
Right. And we can always talk about that discussion. Um, Pauline?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just to clarify, like Alderman White from box said, the CPI is an ongoing thing, it's not one-time money. If you wanna look at what, um, items that should be funded with one-time money, one-time money are such things as land sales, and, so if you need a piece of equipment at that time, take the land sale money and put it towards that, or if it's a one-time, you know, a one-time funding where it's not gonna be a continual thing, that's what you need to look at as a funding source for, for unfunded items.
So if she's looking for a funding source, what you're saying is, it probably needs to come out of something that you're switching in the mayor's budget instead of a CPI, no? Okay.
CPI is ongoing money, it's not one-time money.
Right.
Whereas like a land sale would be one-time money, once it's spent, it's, it'll be gone, but the CPI will get every year.
I, I understand that, but I apologize because that, when we get to that discussion, that will come up. Um, Bill, Crapkey, please. Okay. Um, I think at this point, if we could take a great council, and then come back and have this broke out in totals and, um, where mayor's budget is, and then, unless the council has a suggestion at this point that they would like to do something different. Um, Malcolm, please.
Yeah, I, I'd like to do something different, I'd like to, um, I mean, if, if we've had all of those things explained, and maybe questions answered, I, I would almost recommend that we go home, because I think Patty made a wonderful suggestion to say, I can't, I mean, we've got money up there on the board competing against other money, so I wouldn't feel comfortable voting. Sam's motion was to decrease the travel budget by fifteen thousand, which also impacts someone else's, some, that, some, somewhere else up there, someone else uses the travel money to do it as well, so we're, we're, we're talking about the same pots of money, uh, that we're potentially talking about cutting, so i- it's hard to follow up here like this, so I think Patty's suggestion of putting it on a spreadsheet, putting it up here, when we move it, we can actually see where the dollars are going and where they're coming from.
Okay.
So, at, at the end of this conversation, I'm not prepared to vote on any of these things, I'm not. I think that we should have the finance office then prepare this in some sort of spreadsheet, look at it, and then vote on that.
Okay, and I guess I was...
No, it's not, it's just, we're taking a break now, 'cause I didn't get, we didn't answer, ask questions yet.
Okay, and if, the break was for to kind of break that out, and if we needed to do that, Malcolm, that could be the motion, and at least we'd have the list, and then we can move that around and bring that to the next session, if that's what you're wanting. But at this point, if we could just take a break, uh, like a ten-minute break, and then come back.
Do we get to ask questions then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do, I've got a lot of them.
Ten minutes would be, uh, ten to nine, council, please.
I got a big show, I can answer, come on, man. How you doing, man? Aw, man, I have long drive, it's just... Jackie said, when she calls, you're, like, in my home, or coming across my home, or something, I do bad.
We made it, we did, we made, um, a line, I think, uh, seemed to be... I can't, I believe I'm forty-six years old, I've never been to Yellowstone, I tell you...
Yeah, we were, uh, we just went, like, three years ago. First time, it was made three years ago. I like Glacier better than Yellowstone.
That's all I got, Glacions, oh, Glacions.
See, I like, yeah, I thought it was, I thought it was pretty good, Yellowstone. I mean, I like Yellowstone, but Glacions... I never thought, I'm like, driving in mine.
I'm ready to turn.
I've got questions to ask, I mean, I do.
Why?
Well, I mean, people said things...
I'm gonna beat you up every time you ask me that.
Right, come on, man, I, I think at the end of the day, you still like me, don't you?
I love you, I love you.
You still like me, right?
I'm ready to debate, that's, that's the other day, her and I went toe-to-toe, we walked away, and it was fun.
I beat my son up all the time, but I told him, the end game is that I love you, and I, so, I'm just still loving you.
When we stymie the debate, that's when I have a problem, and when we have a debate, and everything comes out, and, and we either support it or die, we live with it. You know, there's some, when I said, you know, we're beating ourselves up trying to find this money, that's, that's horse, that's horse pugilism. You know, there's things in there, if we said, now, mayor, I really want you to dig deep, I mean, you're...
I just did, I, I've gone through the process, I mean, I've...
Wait, hold on a second.
We have to project your, and we can move that money around now, if you want, if we can put this, or if we can have this...
I'm not ready to, I'm gonna...
I'm, it's just my opinion, it's just my opinion. We, I mean, we don't need to be argumentative to you, Jeff, by the way.
You're not hurt, you're not hurt, man.
Me?
And I'm not frustrated today, I'm just, I'm just listening, but the mayor, so I'm gonna tell the mayor right now not to put all that stuff up, 'cause they, he's having, that's why we gave...
A break?
Yes, and he has the, his computer that's doing all this for us right now, if you wanna flip it around now.
I appreciate you bringing up, he was frustrated, he questioned the system, and I just think that's still...
The mayor? So you guys would like to think on this?
Oh, absolutely.
He didn't put it in the...
You wanna think on this?
I've got questions, though, my questions are gonna ask, I mean, they're gonna lead to more questions.
That's the part that happens.
So can I ask you something? So from here, maybe we just need to ask the questions?
It's the same stuff, we're gonna get to the same end. The, the motion that I made last week about that stuff to fund, that's the stuff we're gonna end up on.
So whether you make a motion before we start all this investigation?
Yeah, we can go through the cases, I made a motion two weeks ago, so I'm not gonna make the motion again.
So we're not gonna do anything for...
I, yeah, I've got questions to ask about what my colleagues did, yeah, I mean, I've got questions to ask about what, what they put on the board.
Okay, so let's do the questions on things that are on the board, instead of move the money around tonight?
Oh, no, no, we can, but I still have questions on it, we can move it around, but I mean, I still have some questions. I disagree with some of the basic principles of what people say, 'cause I don't think it's true.
Okay.
So I've got questions.
So...
Well, Sam said some things, I don't, I don't think they're...
Budget one-on-one, that'd be a big class for us, because we're talking about... Well, most of us have done it one-on-one. You, you put it, when you put it in, in fact, we're talking about stuff we don't have access to.
Yeah, but I think we're fine, I, I think we're fine where you're going.
We're fine, where we're going.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I think so, oh, yeah, we can. No, 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 I, no, I didn't say that.
So what we're gonna do is...
No, no, I didn't say that.
Bill, you need to clear this. I'm taking suggestions because this is a team thing, it's not mutually...
I would recommend, sure, let's put, let's put them up there, and then, I still think people aren't ready to...
And then that discussion, um, I do, I'm not ready to vote.
If we get to an end that we can go tonight, I mean, yeah, let's go, but I don't know, how long are we gonna go tonight?
I didn't put it into it.
You know, the thing is, I miss my boss, I...
I think it's a good thing to put it on.
You know, you know, there's, there's things in there, I mean, remember, remember this gal, what's her name, Pamela, Pamela or something?
Oh, Patricia.
Patricia, yeah, she's a, she's a, now, how many other positions, and how many other things?
Well, I think something looks like that, I think that's something to make that I make my...
Yeah, and we don't know, and that was my point, we should say, this is what we wanna get funded, now, if you didn't let us do this in front of us, we have to do it on the back.
When we go through this, first, we had a funding source, so this is the funding source.
Now, you're gonna come back and say...
Now is the discussion, in motion time.
This is what you want.
Take this off or quit off.
And I made a discussion and a motion.
Of course, we, we don't have, we don't have... I mean, our, our...
I don't think I can be part of the conversation.
That's our job, that's our job, is to policy, you know, if they wanna give... They're the administration.
Then I could do the same thing.
We set the policy, they, they, now, they could come back and say, well, that's all.
So you don't buy into their plan that they put forward?
It's clues, the mayor's always...
No, 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 I'm not, I'm just, I just need, I mean, there's gotta be some...
I mean, I, I'm not, you know, do we wanna, I'm not gonna look, make sure, like...
I've looked through, I think the mayor's done a pretty good job. No, I mean, I do, I, I don't know where you find a lot of cuts, further cuts. I didn't put...
So at this, at this point, we're going through what we're going through.
The real...
See, if I were Karen Waltman, I would come and argue, okay, we just lost shields and targets, or you're gonna have Destination Rushmore Mall, and give me a hundred thousand dollars, find the people.
Then we vote on that.
But, but, but it's not, I was a different...
This is, this isn't...
So what shakes out, so what I'm doing now is this discussion for the whole, now that we have funding source, now that we have discussion on the side of it, and if there's motion, they do that motion still.
That's bad, I don't know, develop, and make...
There's a difference between all, and... I, I, I don't, I mean, I don't disagree that they're diff, but I'm just saying, so we're, we're trying to create this area downtown that's vibrant, and, and at the risk of letting something over there fall by the wayside.
What that something else is, I don't know, and maybe it is, or is it not, I don't know, I can't answer that, I don't...
They didn't justify, I mean, I, I'm for Destination, but they didn't justify it, why they need that. Like, they, they, they need a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, they, they come up with it, we did this with ATO, we made them, where is your proposal, your, your business plan? And, and I'm in the same form, but we, we don't play the same way, we, we play differently with the...
That's true, that's true, one is, I think they're entirely, I think, I think, I think it's, I think it's entirely different between all and...
I, I can't get it.
You know, it's, it's frustrating.
It'll get, Bill, it'll get... Well, Lloyd, I mean, Lloyd's here, well, I mean, maybe...
He took it all...
Right.
I should go use the...
Yeah, I gotta go, too.
You know, you know what's frustrating? Guys didn't sit down and figure out what they want before they got here.
We do homework.
And they're just throwing the shit up there, throw it up there.
These are the numbers, so he was right on some of the numbers, but all of them start the same, this is only one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten...
I'm not gonna support taking anybody's money from people, but I mean...
Here, Ron, those are some of those numbers, check that out.
They ne- they put it in late. Nah, they didn't. Where'd you get this?
I made it. They didn't go on it.
This is very interesting.
We're quite, I'm sorry, average year, that is, we're quite. You're gonna freak. August the whole floor.
Taking from, uh, the travel. Taking from the travel budget.
That's not for me.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Um, in August fourth, two thousand eight, we approved a compensation plan where we all agreed. And there's some twenty-two and higher on this compensation plan.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Just so people.
Oh, I got questions.
Okay. They can, I don't think they knew that. I've been told they don't know.
Just last week? Yeah. Oh, I know, yes.
Okay.
Those are the minutes?
No, they're just, they're just some of the stuff that, some of the minutes.
Did we used to get the minutes of meetings?
This is not all the minutes or anything. I just wanted to know what we approved on some of it. And I had time to look through them. I mean, I can't remember every one of these, but there's twenty-two, and stuff in twenty-four, and on this. And the council just, and everybody, I think it passed. And now today we wanna switch, but.
Lloyd's fault.
If we're, Pauline, are you guys ready?
I'm blaming everything on Lloyd.
Okay. Hello.
My wife's still mad at you.
Oh, man.
Is this, this is on. Okay, council, we're a few minutes over. If we could start.
You know, I saw her. I said, Pam, what are you mad at me for? She said, I'm not mad at you. You've been talking to Lloyd.
Okay, we do have a spreadsheet on there. It sounds like the council wishes is to go through these and have discussion on them and then vote. So if we could have the full council, we can go ahead and start, and that would start with Destination Rapid City and Growth Management. And the discussion on Destination Rapid City, Growth Management, put seventy-two thousand out of the mayor's budget, if I'm correct. Um, actually, all of it's coming out. We're switching Growth Management to twenty-eight thousand out of the hundred thousand that was funded. And seventy-two to Destination Rapid City. Um, discussion on this issue. Lloyd, decree.
I guess I'm, I'm not sure what further down is, but I put it up there is. If I wanna, we can make motions now?
Yes, sir.
My motion would be to, to. My motion would be to take twenty-eight thousand from Destination Rapid City from the mayor's budget. And supply half of the, the, uh, e, employee for Growth Management. And that's where I'm getting that.
Thank you.
Instead of, the original budget was to take two people, which would be fifty-six thousand. So that'd give them one back.
Is there a second on this motion, please? Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Thank you. Discussion on this motion. Sam Quaker.
I would like to ask Marsh Alkins, our Growth Management Director, a question. If this motion passes and, uh, and I believe it funds half an FTE, Lloyd?
One, she's actually, two, this would give her back one.
So the, does it, would this give you a full FTE back?
I think the salary, it would cover the salary and the benefits. We would figure out a way to cover.
Okay, so it would allow for one?
One.
Okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Bill O'Kreppke, please.
Thank you very much. You know, we're talking about adding an FTE, a couple of FTEs here. And if that's the case, and we're saying, well, it's gonna be part of the CPI, CIP, CIP. And you're saying the C.
CPI. You had it right the first time.
Was that really?
Thank you, Bill.
Here, wait a second. Hold on.
You're not the.
CPI.
You're not the only one that messes that up.
Okay, I got it right now. And so what you're, what you're suggesting is, and, and we're, and we're talking about, we have another, the maintenance supervisor parks. And we're saying that this is going to be funded by the CPI. And the CPI is an ongoing thing, and so it's okay. So does that mean if we say we have a hundred thousand dollars with the two, with the two positions? Does that mean, does that mean next year we only have two hundred thousand dollars in the CPI?
Um, the hundred thousand is in the mayor's budget for Destination Rapid City, and he's suggesting that twenty-eight thousand of that hundred thousand and goes to.
All right, well, let me, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Bill. Sorry. I didn't know.
Well, that's okay. I'm just making, the point is, it could be dollar, it could be a hundred thousand dollars. The point is, is that if we're saying that we're taking it out of the CIP as, on a regular, ongoing basis. Does that mean it's gonna be, next year is gonna be reduced, that, that, that amount of money that we've set aside for the CPI? So in other words, if we have three hundred thousand dollars next year for the CPI, and we've, we've said between this, okay, it's sixty-nine thousand, seventy thousand. So if we're authorized an additional three hundred thousand dollars next year for CPI, we're gonna subtract that seventy thousand dollars we put in this year. So now we've only got two hundred and thirty thousand? Oh, wait a second. How, how does it work?
Pauline, assumption, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars that you took this year, you will get that again next year. Plus, you'll get growth on top of the twelve point two or twelve point five million total. So you will have a whole new calculation for CPI next year, but you'll always have that three thirty-seven out there.
That, that's a little bit of confusing. That, thank you, but that's confusing the issue. I could have said three hundred and thirty-seven, or I could say three hundred and fifty thousand. But we're, we're expecting that we have, we'll have that whole three hundred and fifty, or whatever that CPI is gonna be, next year to be able to use, just like we did this year. And if we're gonna say, okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Ellen Hanks, please.
Just so you know, once you add the CPI, it becomes part of the base every single year. So that three hundred and thirty thousand dollars actually becomes part of the base next year. So once you adopt and, 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 uh, which you already have, saying that you're gonna take the CPI, you will automatically get that from every year forward. That is added to the base. So I hope that helped.
I'm sorry. Lloyd Lacroix, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my whole reasoning behind this is I think this, to lose two people in one department is a big hit out once. That's why my suggestion was enough to get, keep one on, see how it goes by, for next year's budget. I identified the funding source, my reasoning behind it, and that was the mayor's budget. That's where I'm at with this, is I think it's a hard hit to lose two people in one year. When that automatically say they're overstaffed. I say, we know, break it down, then next year when it comes back, then we can relook at it again. That's where I identified the, the funding source, and that's my feeling on, I, I just think it's tough to lose two. I'm not talking about adding. We've got, they're already with us. And it, and it's a tough load for a department to, to take someone and transfer them somewhere else.
We have a motion in a second. Um, any other discussion on, thank you, Ms. Karen. Um, Jackie, the motion, please.
Reducing the Destination Rapid City by twenty-eight thousand dollars, adding that twenty-eight thousand to Growth Management Manager Wages.
And if I'm correct, Ms. Jackie, the funding source is already identified in the mayor's budget. Would that be your motion?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jackie, did you get that? Thank you, Ms. Jackie. Ron, Karen, follow up, please.
I'm not unsympathetic to Lloyd's suggestion. But there's one thing I think that we at least should address, and that is the fact that, after a number of years of not being able to figure out how it is that downtown has the, can grow, everyone's wanted downtown to grow and expand. And suddenly, the time seems just right. I mean, it's kind of like the stars have aligned. And I guess a hundred thousand dollars seems to me a way of saying, yes, downtown, you are doing the right thing. The things that they've done that they've never had before, that have never come together is, they now have a relationship with, um, they now have an organizational body capable of really, um, raising large sums of money. They have the people who are large property owners in a cooperative, um, stance with those who are the retailers and who lease those spaces and buildings. That's a, a cooperative spirit that hasn't always been present. And in view of the immense opportunity that I think that hundred thousand dollars offers, I mean, I think it says to the, to those folks, yes, we are the real cheerleaders for what you're doing. And that we believe in what you're doing. And that we are, we support the whole concept of this strong capital improvement organization, which is Rapid City Destination. Um, it's not a tourism activity. It is a capital investment organization. And they have, they have built a board that now includes Rapid City Downtown, which strengthens the position of Rapid City Downtown. Whose challenge always has been that they are largely those who lease properties. And, um, the opportunity to have, um, higher sales, higher land, land values, therefore rents that are increasing rather than decreasing. We all know that the second floors of most of those buildings are highly unutilized. And with this effort, and I, I think a hundred thousand is a modest amount of money. So I guess I have to make a pitch that this is the moment when the stars are aligned. You have the retailers, the property owners, together on the same place in the page saying, let's move forward. And that's a powerful, um, stance to be in, in terms of downtown. And I guess, I don't disagree with Lloyd, and if this is gonna go away, I mean, I'd rather have seventy-five thousand dollars than no money. I mean, I talked to the folks and said, um, if there's a discussion in which this bit, this budget is decreased, do you go away? Are you incapable of doing anything if you have less than a hundred thousand dollars? I mean, I don't honestly believe they will go away. But on the other hand, this is a modest investment in what has the potential to be a huge area of growth. And so I guess I'm pitching that we find the, you know, that we leave the twenty-five thousand additional dollars, there are twenty-eight, I guess, there. And try to find that some other place. But on the other hand, I don't wanna lose the seventy-five either, so.
Malcolm Chapman, please.
I, I missed some of what Karen was saying, but I think I caught the gist of it, and I, and I agree with her that the stars are aligned. And I think for downtown to grow and prosper and be vibrant, uh, you've gotta have those owners of buildings involved in this, and they are, they're at the table, not just the, the tenants anymore, like she said. And I think that for this to happen, that the city has to be involved and has to be in a leadership role. And one of the ways, I think if we tried to do this downtown plan by ourselves, it would fall on its face. We can be a catalyst by providing resources, providing money, but if we had to do it, it would, it wouldn't work. So we've got people in place to do that. So I, I would agree, let's not, um, cut the money. And then I have another issue, I think, with this, because it seems like on the surface that we're not adding any employees, but we are. You can't do this plan without adding employees, because my understanding is that two employees, um, that Marcia would be losing will now go, maybe the, the same two won't, but one employee will go to finance. And one employee will go to IT. Those other two employees that Marcia would be losing, the, the actual people would find homes somewhere else in the city. So if we do this and we put one back with Marcia, we actually have to go out and hire someone to put back with Marcia. Or leave one of them there and hire someone for IT, or hire someone for finance. So the proposal that Lloyd has put on here is actually adding an FTE. It's not just a direct transfer of two people that stay within the city. So we're adding a new person to the budget. So my recommendation is that we would vote down this proposal of, um, of, of taking money from Destination Rapid City for those two reasons. One, it's a tipping point for downtown, and two, I think we'd be adding, um, an FTE right now.
Thank you, Malcolm. Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Um, roll call, please, Jackie.
Martenson? Hancock?
Take the money out? No.
Deb, your, your vote was?
Sorry, no, please.
O'Kreppke?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Feifenbach?
No.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
Lacroix?
Aye.
The motion fails.
Okay. Um, that motion fails, and we go on to Mayor and, um, Bill O'Kreppke, please.
Thank you very much. I, uh, Lloyd's got some good points. And maybe, and I don't know where we can find the, the monies and where we can find the additional, whatever we need to do. But I voted no, because I didn't want you to take it away from Destination Rapid City. If there's another place to find the money, I would certainly, I would certainly support what you're trying to do. You know, Growth Management, if we're in the Growth Management business, and, and if the Rapid City is growing, then we need to support what they're doing over there. Uh, so I'm not opposed to adding another FTE to replace, or to an additional one, to help replace some of the ones that are being moved around. Uh, I just hope we can find another, uh, another source. So I'd like to encourage the group to say, let's not throw it off the, off the radar screen. Uh, maybe there's another way we can finance it.
Thank you, Bill. Next is, um, Mayor and Council Travel. From thirty thousand, I'm sorry, take fifteen thousand off it, if I'm correct, and make it to thirty thousand. And was the total, can I ask one question? Was the total on Mayor and Council budget this year for Travel, was it forty-five thousand?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Keep in mind, look at the last line item also, and I wanna take both of those together. Because you have Mayor and Council Travel on the bottom for taking it from, from up top, from thirty to twenty. So you're actually, you have, you actually have it listed there twice.
Um, I, or we can just go through, just like Destination Rapid City, there might be a different motion. Thank you, sir. Um, Sam, did you have a motion?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you.
Um, to spur the discussion along, I'm going to.
Sam.
Yes.
Just the, no, just the mic. No, I'm sorry, just the mic.
Okay. All right, um, I'm going to offer a motion to take the Mayor Council Travel budget from forty-five thousand to twenty thousand. And take the twenty-five thousand dollars and put it in the Police Department budget as two line items. One line item was eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for Wavy, and the other line item for sixty-two hundred and fifty dollars for Front, Front Porch Coalition. And that is my motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Um, discussion on that motion. Bill O'Kreppke here first, please.
Thank you. You know, we're just throwing numbers around. What is, what does that mean as far as travel goes? I mean, we're saying, we're, we're going from forty-five thousand down to thirty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
From forty-five to twenty, so it's over half. What does that mean as far as travel for, for us? Does that allow us to go on one trip only? Does it allow us to go on one and a half trips, or, or what is that, what does that mean?
It's one of the motion.
Okay, so that means all of us have the opportunity to go on just one trip a year.
Ellen Hanks, please.
My suggestion is knowing what airline tickets are, and, and if you're talking about going to the National League of Cities event, I do not believe twenty thousand dollars will get all the council to that. What we pay to attend these meetings, paying for the lodging, paying for the, for the registration, paying for the airline tickets, it's well above two thousand dollars to actually attend a function. So at twenty thousand dollars each, there would not be enough money in this budget for all ten of the council members to attend one National League of Cities event.
So you're saying two thousand, uh, two thousand a person per trip?
I think that's actually low. I don't think you can do it for that.
Well, I guess the point is, instead of saying a, a, a number of, say, thirty thousand, if we have an idea what it typically costs for one person to make one trip, and then multiply that times ten, that, or eleven, that, that'll give you an opportunity to, because not all of us are gonna go to Washington or the other one, which will give us money if we wanna go to Pier and those, those kinds of places, and that should equal out, and that should be pretty close. Rather than just saying thirty thousand. So my rec, my, my request would be, what's a typical cost, multiply times eleven, and that's what the budget is.
Do you have a substitute motion, Mr. O'Kreppke?
Well, that would be it.
I can, I can, I think I can give you an idea of what we spent, I believe in two thousand and seven, uh, on Council Travel, Mayor. and seven, on council travel, mayor's travel, I think we spent about forty-two thousand dollars.
And the point is, we've made more than one trip a year.
Some, some folks did, yes.
And so, if, so if it's our policy that we're setting up right now is to only have one trip a year, then we need to fund that one trip a year.
Then what I, my suggestion would be, figure three thousand dollars times eleven, and that add in some additional funding if you want to go, say, to the South Dakota Municipal League meeting, because that's also, a lot of folks attend that meeting. And so, they're gonna, just keep in mind, you're taking a budget from roughly about sixty, sixty-five thousand, and the motion on the floor would take it down to twenty thousand dollars.
Well, I would certainly caution the, the council to be careful on cutting the travel budget that much. Education is way too important for all of us, and I'm, and I'm hoping that we can at least budget enough for at least one trip. And if it's three thousand, that's thirty-three thousand dollars. If you have Municipal League, that's another, you know, thirty-three, another couple of thousand. So, thirty-five thousand. I would make a motion that we don't, that we cut it down, or no lower than thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars.
So, your substitute motion would be to take it to thirty-five thousand? Okay. There's been a substitute motion from forty-five thousand to cut to twenty and break that down to take it to thirty-five thousand, Bill? Is there discussion on the motion at thirty-five thousand? Is there a second? I'm sorry. Is there a second on the motion?
We're just seconding a motion of thirty-five thousand right now, Patty.
There's a second for discussion on the motion, Patty, right now is to take the budget to thirty-five thousand, and it's a substitute motion on travel. Patty, please. Yes, ma'am.
While I am a little uncomfortable about knocking down the travel budget to twenty thousand, feeling that we might cut ourselves at the knees as far as travel goes, I would support it for this year if it funds the Front Porch Coalition and Wavy, and we can always increase the budget down the line next year if it proves that we really are hamstringing ourselves as far as, and, you know, improving, you know, our own education and experience to the city council. And I'm not speaking as a newbie, because I know going on a trip would have a very real value to any city council member and to the city as a whole. So, I guess I'm not supporting the thirty-five, reducing to thirty-five thousand, but I would support Sam's original motion.
Thank you. Lloyd O'Kroy, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess, I'm not, I respect what people are trying to do, but I'm not in support of reducing it anymore. I think the mayor did a good job on this. He averaged out what we, what's been used, and he did reduce it down and kept it about where it is. We have a resolution on the books saying, "We will put enough money in the book, in the budget, so every council member and mayor can go to the spring and fall National League of Cities." I mean, we do have a resolution in the books on that. We funded it that way. And I think that's fair. And we do have a policy set to where if you think that travel's in excess, you know, you have to go through the council president and the mayor for anything above and beyond those, and in front of the council. So, the council has the say if you can go or not. I mean, so I don't know why we're reducing it. I mean, if we can look back, it's done, we're gonna have new council members, they need to learn what's going on. So, I don't support shortening it now. I mean, we're going through this, and I think everybody's got a list of stuff that we want to go through, and I don't think this is a high priority to be cut, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Next in line, please. Raise your hand. Ron Kroger, thank you, Ron.
Pauline, somewhere in our papers here, you provided everybody the history of council travel. Do you have a clue where that's located at?
In the small binder, it's the first page behind the other tab. This binder? Yes, thank you.
Behind the first tab?
Behind the other tab, it's the first page. And the other tab is the very last tab.
Say that again, please, Pauline.
Under the other tab, which is the very last tab in your small binder, the first page.
The word that says other, that's what you meant. I was trying to figure other tab.
Well, I'm not finding it.
Other.
You have more tabs than I do.
Right here.
What's it under? It's not the back?
Under other.
Under other. You have different tabs, I'm sorry.
I'm okay.
But anyhow, and that has a history, I'm still not finding it, but...
Right there.
What's it under?
Just the very top line.
Oh, okay. I mean, you know, you go back to two thousand and five, we spent seventeen thousand dollars. And in two thousand and eight, our budget is what? Is that forty-five thousand? Or did, no, some of that was cut out, there's almost sixty thousand for two thousand and eight. You know, I can certainly support a motion that takes us down to twenty-five thousand dollars, somewhere in that area. To go, if you look at the history here, fourteen thousand, eleven thousand, seventeen thousand, all of a sudden thirty-seven thousand, forty-five thousand, two thousand and eight, sixty thousand. That's a heck of a hump. And I know the mayor, on his budget, went back to department heads a second time after he went through the budget and asked for more cuts. And we're not even looking at those, we're just gonna let those slide by, so the department heads have taken a double whack, and this council needs to sit back and take a little bit off of their, off of what they're taking out of this piece of pie and put it onto something that's more worthwhile, the council travel.
Thank you, Ron. Any other discussion?
Uh...
It's at thirty-five thousand at this point.
Right. And I'd like, I, do we have a motion?
Yes.
We had a second?
The substitute and the second. Bill made a substitute at thirty-five, Karen made a second, and that was to take it down to thirty-five thousand. That's what we're discussing right now.
And I, and I'll just make one more comment on council travel. You know, back in ninety-seven, actually, I don't know if it was policy, but normally what took place back then was, it was either, it was constant leadership that went on, on these conferences. And the mayor and council leadership come back in ninety-seven or ninety-eight and thought it was well worth having all the council be able to attend those. And I think probably the vote was unanimous to be, be able to allow all the council members to attend these conferences. And I've, and I've been to my share, and I, and I think they're well worth it, but I can tell you, if you go back, you know, to two thousand and five or whatever it was, we had good representation going to those council, those conventions, and all of a sudden, to double and triple the budget on them is going way out of line. So, I kept quiet over the last year when we talked about council travel, but I think at this point in time, it's appropriate to definitely cut, cut it down.
Do you have a second substitute, Ron?
Yeah, if there's room for a second substitute, I'll, I'll say twenty-five thousand.
Thank you. We have had a second substitute motion by Ron Kroger. Is there a second?
A second, I have.
There's a second on, Ron made the motion, and Sam the second on twenty-five thousand. Next in line would be Ron Wyffenbach, and then Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have a calculator, but it would be interesting to take seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty and add three percent to it for two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, and two thousand and nine, and tell me what that number is. I mean, if it's twenty-five thousand, I would support the motion. Seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty in two thousand and five. If we take three percent and add it to that number, and then in two thousand and six, add three percent, and two thousand and seven, add three percent, and come up with a number I could support, if that number is twenty-five thousand, I could support that number. I think ultimately Kroger makes a valid argument. Seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty in two thousand and five. So, if you add three percent to that, and then three percent the next two, three years...
If we can come back to that, Ron, that would be good, when they have the answer, if they could just tell us, Bill O'Krepke, please.
Thank you.
I'll support the one five.
Thank you. That came to about twenty thousand. Sorry to interrupt you, Bill.
I got about eighteen, nineteen. Anyway, the, something we have to remember here, and I can certainly understand where Roland Kroger's going, and, and some of the others. The problem is, is that you got the mayor's travel on there, too. And right now, we are in the, in the hunt to, to convince our congressional delegation to support us on some very, very important matters that we've got going. And to limit his travel or dip into contingencies to make that happen, I think is, I think is unwise. Whether we go or not, you know, that's, that's another story. But I think that by going to twenty-five thousand, I don't know, divide twenty-five thousand by three, anybody have that?
No.
Okay, so eight, eight people can go. So, so you're talking about eight trips, then. Now, that includes all of us, plus the mayor's travel. And eight trips, when we're trying to go and convince our congressional delegation and others on the Hill to give us some money to help support us on, on the water and our sewer and those kinds of things, and I think we're making a big mistake by tying our hands as much as we are. I think thirty-five is probably the appropriate number, but, you know, that's, we'll see how the votes go. But his, but the mayor's travel's coming out of this number, too. And if there's only, and if we go to twenty-five, that's only eight trips. I'm not so sure if that's a very wise number to take.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to take the travel budget to twenty-five thousand, and it was a second substitute. Any discussion? Malcolm Chapman.
I understand, I think, what the council's trying to do, if, if there has to be cuts made in the city, that the council should be a part of those cuts as well. And I think in a responsible manner, the mayor looked at that and said, "Well, truly, what is the council spending on, on all of this travel?" And I mean, that number came to be about forty-five thousand dollars or forty-some odd thousand dollars. So, that's what the mayor put in the budget, because that's realistic. I, I think it's problematic, I didn't hear tied to this budget, that what that's saying is that you can only take one trip. We do supplemental appropriations all the time. So, if we come to June and all of that money's gone, and there's a trip that needs to be taken to, as Bill said, to go talk to our congressional delegation, or someone finds something that they want to go to, I think it's even more problematic to then come back and say, "We're taking a supplemental appropriation for travel, specifically for travel." The council travel budget, like every other budget, has been a contributor to returning funds to the council. Last year, it didn't say that the council turned back seventeen thousand dollars to the city. It said the council set a record for travel. So, I, I think I look at it different ways. One of the things that we're gonna discuss a little bit later, and one of the things that I think people got excited about was, and I'm not trying to bump up the council versus anyone else on the list, but I guess in terms of how I think, is the CBB. They came here and they said, you know, "We are one of the one things around here that there's a return on investment, and as a result, you should fund us more." And I think the council probably will do that, because they put heads in beds around here, and people come to our community and generates more sales tax. Well, because we've gone to conferences, I mean, Lloyd, and I say it again and again, Lloyd came back with an idea about budgeting, that we challenged some things last year, that there's a direct savings of ninety thousand dollars, and Jerry shared with us through a spreadsheet to say, "Because of this idea, there's a ninety thou real savings in city funds, because of an idea that he learned." We just generated, and I say "we" because the council approved working on the National League of Cities coming here, based on the multipliers that the CBB uses, we just generated an additional fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars for this community, because we've made the investment of sending people and efforts to the National League of Cities that they then reinvested in us to come here. I think what we're doing is a mistake. I would say leave the money in the budget. If we don't use it all, and if you look at the numbers to date so far, those numbers aren't on track to be the same as they were last year. So, the council has self-policed itself in terms of travel. I think that this is some philosophical argument that, "Let's take away from travel," that's not rooted in anything that's real, that's rooted in something that someone wants to win, a debate about travel. I won't support the motion on the floor. I think it's, we have cut that travel budget down by forty percent from what the mayor proposed to where it's going. I think that's a mistake. I think that shows our community as that somehow we're falling backwards, just like if we're gonna have this discussion about cutting someone's salary around here, potentially, you don't get good people then if everyone starts to realize that Rapid City's cutting salaries. As always, I will abide by whatever the council does, but I think it's a mistake if we cut the budget. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Malcolm Chapman. Ron Kroger, please.
I don't disagree with Malcolm that there definitely is a return on investment. I truly believe that there is, but I'm fumbling through this book again to the other, and I can't find it. But somewhere, somewhere we have a piece of paper that shows what the travel was for all the department heads, and I don't know if it's on that one or not, but the fact of the matter is, there's ten of, how many employees are there? Six hundred and some?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred and one.
Seven hundred and one employees, and the ten of us are second in the city budget for travel. There's a lot of very important departments that work for the city. And I think it's truly just as important to send them to get education as it is us. And I know the Police Department is first, and I think City Council is second, and the Fire Department was third, somewhere in that area there. We were budgeted for sixty thousand dollars this year, and the mayor is proposing forty-five, he's decreasing it. I think, and if you go back historically over what we've used, and the council has been able to attend in the past, basically, the conferences that they wanted. Mayor Hanks was on the council with me when we were spending seventeen thousand dollars, and we went on a number of trips together, including other council members. Trips that...
You can't remember.
...gave us the city a return. Scott's gone? Okay. But anyhow, but, you know, I...
This is streaming audio.
I think we do need to move on, but, you know, I, I think twenty-five thousand dollars is more than enough, and somewhere down the line in January, or February, or June, or July, and we're out of money for travel, and something that is extremely important, I feel pretty confident that the council would find money out of council contingency to have the mayor, whoever, go on a trip to try and do something good for the city of Rapid City. I feel very confident about that part. So, and I'm very confident that we can get by with twenty-five thousand dollars in travel. I have no plans of taking a trip this year, and I know a number of other council members have no plan either, and to have forty-five thousand dollars in the travel budget, I think is, is not realistic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron Kroger. Any more discussion? The motion on the floor is to take travel down to twenty-five thousand. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Roll call, Jackie. Aye.
O'Kreppke?
No.
Chapman?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Olson?
No.
Kroger?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
O'Kroy?
No.
Martinson?
Aye.
That motion carries five to four.
Five to four. For, it was twenty-five thousand, was the motion.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. Ron Kroger, please.
It passed.
It, it passed, five to four.
I do have something on a different item. I, I just noticed that on our last vote, Destination Rapid City is back to the hundred thousand dollars, and the twenty-eight thousand, or whatever it was, for growth management has disappeared. I would like to make a motion that we put twenty-eight thousand dollars back into growth management to come out of the CIP, or CPI. Bill's got me doing it now. CPI.
Okay. There's been a motion to put the twenty-eight thousand back, and probably should've done that back then, so we'll leave, we'll put some leeway, because it was on there, and I didn't make it as a separate item, so I apologize. So, the motion is to put the twenty-eight thousand with the funding source CPI back in the, in the category, so. We'll go back to the growth management, and that would be on the floor of... We'll go back to the Growth Management, and that would be on the floor, of funding that through CPI.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, sir.
If you go up there and look at it, everything that's listed there currently, if we were to fund everything up there, we still, and do the changes that are on there, we would still have 212,000 available for other things.
Thank you. And she is keeping that list. So the motion would be to fund Growth Management, the $28,000 through CPI. Is there a second? Lloyd, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, second. Lloyd, second to motion. Discussion. With no discussion, all in favor of funding the Growth Management through the CPI? Malcolm Chapman.
I guess I, so, are we actually putting the funds, are we just talking about putting the funds up there? Like, I mean, before we started with this list, are we creating the list over, or are we actually voting on to put the money there from a certain place, and then we're moving off?
Right. We are moving on after we put it in the CPI. At this point, they are keeping a tally.
I'm just putting that on the list. I didn't really go off after.
We're actually making motions on these items at this point. Through CPI. And there's a second by Lloyd. Okay. Is there a discussion on that motion?
Yeah, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with the process. So when we voted the first time to not do what Lloyd wanted, we didn't, we weren't voting on Growth Management? We were just voting on?
Voting on his motion to take it out of that. $28,000 from that $100,000 source, which was the mayor's budget, if I'm correct. For Destination Rapid City. Yes.
But we weren't voting to decrease Growth Management. We were just really, the focus of that was Destination Rapid City.
Yes.
So just to be a little argumentative now, if I wanted to say, I want, the next item, I want to take council travel to 60,000, and I fund it from somewhere else, could I do that?
Yes.
Okay.
And if that motion passes, then, and you're?
I don't see how we're going to get to the bottom of this list if that's the case. I mean, I don't. And I'm not going to do that, because the council has said 20,000 or 25, whatever. I mean, I wouldn't do that, but I don't know how we get to the bottom of the list if every time we vote on something, we take it out, then we put it back in by another motion. I don't know how we get to the bottom.
And I don't know how to answer that, except it is a different motion, but Bill O'Krekey, please.
Thank you very much. I'm looking at this, so right now, we are 212,000, $212,173.
Still available.
Still available. Well, it seems to me that if we, if we don't touch the, delay the pay grades, we're within just a couple bucks, right?
Right.
And so, I mean, we're almost there, I think, right? Unless we want to talk about additional travel monies.
Right, and other things. So we're going to go through the list at this point.
So.
Unless there's a different motion that you want to?
Are we going to talk about the wages right now? Is that the next one on the list?
We're putting delay grades 22 and above pay scale. That would be next.
That's the next one, okay. I'll wait till after that.
Thank you, sir. The council, again, the travel budget was 25,000, that did pass. The delay on grades 22 and above pay scale is next. That was the motion. That passed, the 25,000. Oh, I'm sorry. I, you're right. Sorry, I'm getting a little tired. We went back to Growth Management, I apologize, there was a lot of discussion. We met back that the $28,000 from Growth Management would come from CPI. Thank you, Sam. And that was the motion, and seconded, the motion was made by Ron, seconded by Lloyd. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Roll call. Okay. Jackie, roll call, please.
O'Krekey?
Yes or no?
So if I vote that yes, we're putting, how much, 20?
Eight.
$28,000 into that, and it's going to come out of the CPI for someplace.
From the CPI.
Okay.
Puts it back on the list. So your vote is what, Mr. O'Krekey? We have a motion on the floor.
I'll defer to Malcolm for if I can.
We're taking a roll call vote. Bill.
No.
Thank you. Bill?
Chapman? Wifinback?
Aye.
Olson?
Guys, we need to start speaking into our mics. Repeat the motion.
Increasing Growth Management budget, $28,000 for wages, and taking that amount from the CPI.
Uh, yes.
Kroger?
Aye.
Quaker? McCroy?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Hattuck?
No.
That motion carries.
Aye. And we've taken that amount from the CPI, and that's our total. Okay, thank you. Next is delay grades 22 and above pay scale. Is there a motion on the floor? Sam Quaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I'm proposing, and I already talked about the reasons why, there is a seven and a half percent pay increase scheduled for 22 and above. I believe that the, it isn't as urgent to put those in all three steps in place. Each step is slightly more than two and a half percent. So I believe that it is appropriate to implement one step in January of '09, and delay the other two steps until 2010. Now, when I offer my motion, am I being requested then to allocate those funds? Is that what the request, is that, is that how we need to structure this?
No.
No. So my motion is to proceed with implementation of one step in January of 2009 for pay grades 22 and above, and delay the other two steps until the 2010 budget process.
Is there a second on the motion? I'll second the motion for discussion. Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there's some complications with this motion, if we're going to start just, without having all the information on the table. I think the last time we met, I heard that you can't just take apart pieces of the pay matrix. We then have to look at the entire pay matrix. I'm not sure how that impacts others. When I joined the council, I think we just started to implement some of the wages at some of the earlier stages of the pay scale, with the understanding that those that were at department head levels, or 21 and above, or 22 and above, waited. They had to wait until those other ones were implemented, and they waited. And now here we are, near the latter part of that stage, and we're going to say, no, we're going to still make you wait more. And then I think it's philosophically the wrong signal to send. If we're trying to attract people to come to our community, we're trying to grow our community, we should be finding ways to encourage people to want to work for the city. I don't know if that would encourage professionals at the department head level to want to come. One of the things I heard about something later on the agenda is that we made pledges. We made a pledge to Black Hills Vision to do $75,000 a year for five years. Well, we made pledges to our department heads, to pay them, and to pay them fair wages, and that was the deal then. So now we can say, no? I think not. I think this is a bad idea, and I would like someone from finance to say how delaying this, or not doing it all, impacts the rest of the pay scale and everyone else who works for the city. I don't think it's just in a vacuum.
Do you have a substitute motion?
I don't, I want to hear your answer to my question.
Thank you. Pauline, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am not 100% familiar with the way that the pay matrix works, so if there's another department head that can help me if I say something incorrect, please do so. It is my understanding that by Sam's motion, it's not changing the pay matrix that was approved. What is changing is how that pay matrix is implemented for the steps, or the grades 22 and higher. So instead of getting the two steps in January, and the one step in July, grades 22 and higher would only get the one step in January, as the rest of the employees at grades 21 and lower also get. The actual pay matrix itself would not change, it would just take longer to get to where they technically should be by the, what the council had approved prior.
Thank you. You have a follow-up, Mr. Chapman?
I do, I understand. So what Sam has proposed then is, under the overall guidelines of the pay matrix, he's just shifting some things around in there, and not necessarily changing the pay metric. So it's no need to worry about if we need to do other things for some of the other pay grades. That's what I think I heard.
Pauline?
As far as I know, that is correct. Jason, you may know better than I.
Jason Green, do you have a comment, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I understand the motion, it is simply to delay the extra steps that are proposed for all of the employees' grades 22 and above, and that includes more than just your 11 department directors. I think there are 70-some employees that fall within that category. The only thing I would add is that this hasn't been a four-year process, it's been an eight-year process. You've got to go back to the first Conry study.
Thank you, Jason. Malcolm, do you have a follow-up?
I do. I understand what Sam's doing. I think it, if the money, it seems as if the way the mayor structured the budget, the money is there to pay those grades, so I don't know why we're looking for delaying them if the money is there. I have a substitute motion, that we leave the pay grades as they are, and my substitute motion would also say that we take the money that the council was given last year in terms of technology allowance, which is $100 a month, which is $1,000, I guess, a month total, $12,000 a year, and we take that away from the council, and we put that into the budget somewhere. That's my motion.
Discussion on that motion? Leave the pay grades as they are, if I'm correct, and take that $100 that was allowed for technology, and put that back in the budget. And there was a second by Lloyd. Discussion, please. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Sorry, I didn't see you, Sam. And Sam, and then Karen, please.
Thank you. I'd like to ask clarification. Pauline, I believe that the spreadsheet that we were provided regarding 2009, it is my understanding that there is not a pay increase scheduled for mayor and council for 2009, unless the council specifically authorizes for a 3% pay increase for mayor and council. Is that correct?
That is correct. We do budget that amount in the budget, so that the funding is there, should you guys approve it, but you do approve a resolution each year for your guys' race.
So unless there is a three, unless there is a motion to authorize a 3% pay increase for mayor and council, mayor and council pay will stay at the 2008 level. Is that correct?
That is correct, unless you pass that resolution.
Now, and I believe that this is to the substance of the motion, I'd like to, if the mayor doesn't mind, I'd like to ask him a question. On July 27 or 28, when I had asked what the increase was for the department heads for 2009, your answer was 3%. Came back the next day and corrected that. Were you aware at the time that you wrote the budget that it was three steps, or seven and a half percent, rather than three?
Madam Chair.
Is it okay if I ask that?
Yeah, absolutely. The answer is yes, I did know that. When you asked the question off the cuff, typically, we were looking at basically 3% increases, so having gone back and talked, as soon as I answered the question, went back and talked with staff, we talked about that, and they reminded me of the 22 and aboves, that we're going to get the additional increase. And so I think I corrected that almost immediately, but no. When the budget was prepared, please keep something in mind, when the budget is prepared, typically, the budget numbers for salaries are provided by the finance department, and the reason is, is because it's a city council, through their policies, that actually establishes salaries. The mayor does not establish salaries. You guys adopt the pay matrix, you passed a resolution about eight years ago, basically putting into place the mechanism we have right now. And so, quite honestly, when I go through the budget, those are figured in, those numbers come from the finance office, and none of the line items for salary, other than the couple that when we shift the FTEs around, those were not changed, other than the numbers from when they came from finance, so. I hope that answered your question. I know that's a little bit long.
You know, I understand what Malcolm is doing, and I would support a standalone motion to end the technology allowance, but I think that's substantially different than the salaries themselves, we're really talking about allowances versus salaries, and I guess Malcolm's motion, one part of it is good, and the other part of it is not, so for that reason, I would oppose it on those grounds. But I would again ask the council to please take a look at these numbers, and in light of the problems that the school district is experiencing, it is only fair to take a real, real close look at this. And I don't want to be painted as anti-employee or anti-personnel. I am still suggesting that we give a increase next year, but no other organization that I'm aware of is able to afford 7.5% for 2009.
Thank you. Alan Hanks, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is going to be a little bit interesting in many places. I'm trying to understand the relationship between the school district and the city council's budget. To me, there's no correlation whatsoever. Sam, my apologies, I don't understand why you keep bringing up the school situation when that has nothing to do with the city council budget. The other thing is, and I think I need to point this up, first of all, keep in mind, whatever you do with salaries, quite honestly, it impacts, doesn't impact me, it's already been established here. It impacts 72 employees. All too often, everyone keeps talking about department heads, department heads, department heads. Reality of it is, it's 72 of your professional folks that provide professional services to the city. They're the engineers, they're the attorneys, they're the finance folks. It's all the professional folks you have down here. And I find it just a little bit ironic, and I'm going to be very blunt when I say this, I find it very ironic that we seem to be more worried about taking, not living up to our obligations to the employees, I'll just lay it out there. Taking, basically backing away from the obligation we made to our employees eight years ago to bring them to the midpoint of the study, and so what we're proposing to do is take the raises that they were counting on, that we, there again, obligated ourselves to, told them we were going to give them, and turn around, and these are all wonderful organizations up here, but you're putting a lot of these programs ahead of your city employees. You're talking about non-city functions, and you're saying, let's put all the money in here, and let's, in essence, let's not worry about the obligation that we made to our city employees eight years ago to get them to that midpoint. I did, I find that, well, I think there's been an awful lot of leeway given on this discussion, so I'm going to take the, I'm going to take that leeway. Because I think it's absolutely unforgivable to take money away from your employees that you had obligated, and basically made that commitment to eight years ago, and then turn around and start funding non-city functions. There again, my philosophy, and I'll repeat it, my philosophy is very simple, is the fact that there's the must-dos, the should-dos, and the like-to-dos. And guess what? We're starting to do a lot of like-to-dos, and we're taking it from the should-dos and the must-dos. And philosophically, you're basically taking money out of the employees' pockets to fund non-city functions. And I have a real philosophical problem with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, just one question. On August 4th, 2008, which is not too long ago, we did a resolution to amend the City of Rapid City's compensation plan by adding position, of different positions. And if I'm correct, Pauline, we had different 22s, 24s, and different things that we all decided that they should get more money. And now we're saying, and, and I don't know if everybody approved this, 'cause I, I didn't get the final thing, but I'm pretty sure everybody on this council approved it. So now we're arguing to go back after something we approved, August 4th, and say, okay, I think we shouldn't do this now. And this has different ones, not just 22s, but it has a bunch of 22, 24s, and different things. So if we change this, so what does that do, Pauline, to this compensation plan? I mean, this, this plan that we just approved as a council? Do we have to go back and void this and, and do it again? Or what, what happens after that?
Those would still stand, but they, if they got moved from a grade that was under 22, and they were thinking that, okay, now I move to a grade 22 or higher, I'm gonna get three steps next year, that's not gonna happen if Sam's motion passes.
Okay. So that compensation that we just approved as a council, it would just change the whole plan, what we did?
This would affect those employees as well.
Thank you. Sorry, Ron Wyfenbach, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your philosophical argument. It's, it's a good one. It's, it's a, it's a good point. I'd like to make a motion to fund the salaries for the, as, as listed.
That'd be a, let me see, we have Sam's, if I'm correct, Jackie, then we have Malcolm's, which we have, and then we have a second substitute, would be Ron Wyfenbach, just as is, if I'm correct.
Removing the, the technological whatever, I think that's a ploy that I don't, a road I don't wanna go down.
Is there a second on that motion? Motion made by Mr. Wyfenbach and seconded by Ms. Olson. Discussion on that motion. Ron Kroger, please.
Probably not discussion, but a question for somebody. On the Conry plan, it's been going for eight years, and I can't remember what all are entailed. But my question is, is, you know, the information we got on salaries, department heads and stuff have basically received a 7% pay increase every year. If we go with this motion on the floor, I guess, what are their pay increase scheduled for next year? I, I, I know it's all per individual, but, you know, if you take five years, and quote the 7%, that's 30, 30% pay increase. Is it gonna be 7% next year again? And what, what, what do our lower grades get, I guess, on a yearly basis? I'd like to know that, too.
Ron, Alan Hanks has the answer.
I think I can answer that.
Alan, just, just a sec. Make sure we're speaking into the mics, guys, 'cause they're, they're not hearing you, and they told me to speak in.
Just so you know, this, this is.
That's the plan, okay.
Yeah. This is, this is the eighth year of implementation of the approved pay increases. The 22 and aboves did not get the additional increases during the first four years. They were not froze, and they got, I believe, one step, if I'm not mistaken. They got a two and a half percent. But what was, what, we did not have enough money to bring everybody up to the midpoint. So everybody 21 and below got increases. They got their, their step, plus they got additional steps to get their wages up. Then the 22 and aboves, in the second four years, were given their increases to bring everybody up to what we call the midpoint. Now, just to answer your question, this is the last year of implementation of this plan. After the 2009 budget, in 2010, everybody goes back to exactly the same, with the caveat that in 2010, we go back into union negotiations in 2009 for 2010. But, all things being equal, this is the last year of the implementation. This will be the last year that the 22 and aboves would get additional steps.
I, I guess my question, you mayor, I, I don't know how we've done this in the past, but I mean, on a yearly basis, after we've got to mid-grade on everybody, what do we look at? Do we look at a 3% across-the-board increase for everyone? Or 1%? Or do we divide it up? Or what do we do?
Go ahead. Pauline, I think it's two and a half, isn't it?
That is part of the Conry study that you just completed, that we have not implemented, and that has not been made public yet, because that was, that was going to be part of the negotiations for the, the new union contracts. And it's still in a draft form. But that's why we hired, hired Conry's to come back, is 'cause part of the, the original study was we were gonna have him come back and look at it to see if there's any additional adjustments at the end of that, that period. And they just wrapped that up not that long ago.
The, the goal was, once we got through those eight years, the goal of that study was to get everybody to the midpoint, so that everybody, there would be very little adjustment in the next go-around. The first go-around, there was a lot of compression within the pay matrix. In other words, the folks at the, at the bottom of the scale, you know, the nines, tens, elevens, those steps, were basically pretty close to the midpoint. It was the folks at the top, the 22 and aboves, that were quite a bit below the midpoint. And so that's why you're seeing the adjustments. But to answer your question, after the 2009 budget, everyone hopefully should be where they should, where they were, need to be on the pay matrix.
We have Bill Crepkey, please.
Thank you. Maybe, Mayor, you can help with this. I know where Sam's going, and I can certainly appreciate where he's thinking. What happens if we delay the, delay the implementation of this 7%, six months to June, or July, or whatever it is? What would be the savings on that, and what would be the impact?
I believe, I'm gonna look to Pauline. Each one of the steps is roughly about 150,000. Am I close?
Pauline, please.
Hundred and fifteen?
I believe that Jim Preston had actually asked Mary for that information some time ago, and I don't have that email with me. But I wanted to say that the number that was in the email was about 178,000 dollars, what the, the impact was. I have not added up these, but if they only got one increase instead of the three that are scheduled, that it would be about 178,000.
But my question was, is that what would be the impact, what would be the savings? 'Cause right now, what you're saying is that if we give it to them on January 1st, it's gonna increase 175,000. Is that what I understand?
Every, just so you know, there again, keep in mind, the salary line items within the budgets took into account the approved pay plan by the city council. So everything's budget, is budgeted in. If you don't do anything with the resolution that's on the books, you're fine. The money is in the budget.
I, I understand, but the, the question that I had, and maybe, maybe I'm not communicating it very well. If, if it's 170,000 additional monies, that's the 7%, correct?
No, that's only five.
Well, isn't, isn't, why we, isn't the deal, or isn't the, aren't we going at 7% increase?
All employees get a two and a half percent increase. And then the 22 and aboves, as far as the approved plan, was to give them an additional two steps to get them to the midpoint.
Correct. So what would happen if we delayed that, those two steps that we're talking about?
They will probably never get them. I'll be very honest, and I'll tell you why. Is the fact that if we delay it a year, we're into brand-new negotiations, and my guess is.
No, 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 Mayor, that's not what I was saying.
Okay.
If we give it to them, if we just delayed that six months to June.
You'd save half the money, roughly.
And so you're talking 80,000, 85,000? And what would the impact be?
On morale or on the, on the budget?
I'm sorry.
On the morale of the employees or on the budget?
On the morale.
On the morale. My guess is it'd be devastating, because I would, there again, this is my personal perception. My personal opinion is the fact that all those, those folks that were 22 and above that had been counting on those pay raises, that they'd been promised for eight years, are gonna feel slighted and basically cheated the fact that the council didn't live up to the obligations they made going back eight years ago. I mean, I don't know how to put it any straighter, but I mean, the reality of it is, look at, look at it, look at it this way. If it was your employer, and you were hired, and you were told that this is what you're going to make, this is basically what you can expect in, in, in raises, and some of these folks have been waiting eight years to get to the midpoint, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes and says, you know what? We decided, we're just not gonna implement the final year, or we're gonna delay it even six months. Quite honestly, I, I think that you would have an awful lot of frustrated folks, and, and it wouldn't surprise me, and I'm not saying we'd lose anybody, but it would scare me that we'd probably lose a couple employees, 'cause they don't feel that they could, could trust the city anymore to live up to their promises.
Thank you. You have a follow-up, Bill?
I certainly appreciate that. You oughta, we should look at California, what's happening out there.
Oh, I know.
And I think that's where Sam is, is, is thinking as well, so.
But in all fairness, we're not California, and quite honestly, we don't have that kind of drastic moves that we have to make within our budget. You have, and I'll repeat it again, in front of you, you have a balanced budget. You don't need to go back out and try and freeze wages.
Thank you. Paul, Bill? Thanks. Ron, please.
Thank you. One of the reasons I made the motion, on the, on the, I've been challenged to look at this and, and look at the percentages. Unfortunately, the period of time that it's taken to get these people to where they're supposed to be, it ends up that the percentages are huge this year, or above normal, or above the normal scale for wages throughout Rapid City percentage-wise. But I also did some, some studying on the Conry study. The most recent Conry study that we had that talked about the number of employees that each department had, and, and it summarized the dollar amount, in reference to the dollar amount that they, they did the employee studies. And as you figured those things out, we were pretty much right on with the levels of the number of employees we had in almost every department. But dollar-wise, at the end, the dollar amount was always lower. So that was my conclusion in, in, in making the motion to move on. I think that we do have, my, my one year with the council, we have real professional people in these positions. The percentages seem high, yeah. I don't think that the people in the community in Rapid City probably have received those type of raises in 2009, but that, that's understandable. I know that Wyoming just went through the same thing with their, with their employees. They were all, like, drastically below the, the pay scale that was representing them. They made big changes over there this last year. But I felt compelled to, to give reasoning for my, my, my motion, and the reasoning would be, is if you read the current Conry study, and you look at the numbers of employees, and then you compare it to the dollar, the total number of dollar volume that's going out from each one of those departments, you'll find that it is significantly below the averages that Conry calculated. So I, I, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Malcolm?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I support the motion on the floor to leave it as is. I, I guess, I keep hearing we should not do it, or we should delay it, or we should delay it by year, and, and I still haven't gotten to an answer as to why. I, I, I don't know why we would do that. Why would we go and look for something to decrease the morale of our professional employees? I could understand if we couldn't balance the budget. I could understand if things were dire, that we needed to do something like this and look at that level. I think you have that kind of conversation with these 72 employees, and you, you cross that bridge. But we're looking to create problems where there's no problem. And, and I guess my question is simply, why? Delay it for what reason? The money's there. We, it's been promised to them. Of course, the percentages are gonna be high when you take eight years' worth of raises and compact them into four years' worth of giving, earning. I, I guess I don't understand why.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor for no change. Any more discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? One no with Sam Quaker. Any other no's? If not, Bill Crepkey. Two no's, Jackie, Bill Crepkey, and Sam Quaker. Thank you, council. The time is getting late. What is the, I'm even getting tired.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that the work that we've done today moves forward as it, I mean, with the, the motions that we approved so far tonight would move forward, and we would continue on the, on this spreadsheet the next meeting.
Thank you. Discussion on that motion.
I, I'd like to make a follow-up. In making that motion, in going with the mayor's philosophy, I would like to, the council to challenge themselves to find a way to, to remove the 300, is it 350,000? From other parts of the budget? 330, no, the, um. No, the, whatever the total amount was that we just increased the wages. So it, it's a direct reflection that we're willing to invest in our assets in the city, and take. But I just, just wanted to give you guys something to go away with. The same amount that we increased, I mean, the, I can't explain it. The things you need, the things you want. We, we passed, we just passed a motion for the things that we need. I, I say we take that same amount of money, 345,000, or whatever that number was, and remove it from the things that we, we want.
Is that a motion?
Instead of we need.
I'm just kidding you.
I just challenge you guys when you come back, 'cause I'm gonna probably make that motion, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion, council? If not, do we have a motion? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. We will set the new council.